Call the Runcourt White Zoning Board of Appeals to order. And let's first stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic, which stands one nation under the House of Independence with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, a few announcements to make. Fire exit is located to your left. In the event of a fire, you will be notified by an announcement. If notified, please move in a calm and orderly fashion to the exit. Do not use the elevator. Use either the front or back stairs to leave the building. The meetings are recorded by the Secretary, Michelle, for purposes of a record and minutes. So please identify yourself each time that you come to the podium and speak into the microphone. The board will follow the items in the order in which they appear on the agenda tonight. There are extra copies if anybody wants one at the door. After the case has been called, the applicant or a representative shall come to the podium and identify him or herself, state their address, and then present their case. The zoning board will then have the opportunity to question the applicant. Then the case will be open to public input. Anyone wishing to speak to the board regarding the application, come to the podium and identify themselves along with their address and direct questions to the board. Once the public input has been completed, the applicant or representative will be given the opportunity to respond to any public input. Then I will close the public hearing and continue to the next case. After all the cases have been heard, the board will take a short recess and then return and deliberate each case in order of the applicants that are still present. No further input is allowed at this point, but you may stay and listen to the deliberation. If you wish to leave, you can find out the results by calling the Planning or Zoning Board tomorrow morning after 9:00. And that being said, I think, Michelle, we're ready?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First item on the agenda this evening is case number ZB 1703-1, upon the matter of request by Shane McCormick for an area variance to install a six-foot-high side yard fence exceeding maximum permitted height on premises 104 Northfield Road in an R1 residential district.
I am Jennifer McCormick.
Shane McCormick. Right hand up. Swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you.
Yes.
Thank you.
So we're requesting a two-foot variance to continue six-foot white vinyl fencing that we've put around the perimeter of our backyard. Purpose of the fencing is not only for privacy, but to protect and contain our dogs and our The two-foot variance will, the fencing will run in between our house and our neighbor's house. It's about 22 feet long and then 10 feet across that will connect to the corner of our house. Hopefully there's any adverse effect on the physical appearance or environmental conditions in the neighborhood. It won't cause any drainage problems or doesn't, it's a nice-looking fence.
I was there last month when it got postponed, and I noticed that there is a fence up already. It looks relatively new.
It is. We were able to put, we got a permit to put up most of the fencing. We just need the variance to continue where it leaves off to extend it to the front of the house.
And it is the six-foot fence that comes back to the back corner of the house at this point. And I noticed there's a large tree that's just at the corner of the house. Were you planning on taking that tree down?
No.
Is that tree forward of the house, or is it next?
It's almost in between. It's, so it'll be just short of that and then cutting over.
It's almost, it's kind of like up to the front of the house, you mean?
Right. Is it, so is the tree going to be behind the fence or in front of the fence?
It's going to be about half, half and half.
No, our fence, it'll be, our fencing won't, will be in front of the tree. Does that make sense?
Okay.
It'll be on the corner of it, basically.
Okay. I noticed there's no door on that side of the house.
There will be. We're going to put a gate up that's flush with our, the corner of the house.
Are you, so you have plans to put a doorway on the side of the house?
We have a patio, kind of where the fence ends now, we have a patio door going out right there.
Right. So you're, do you have plans on putting a door?
Yes.
To the front part of the house or to the back part of the house?
The gate, for the gate?
No, door, door into the house.
So it is a door.
You have one door right now that goes onto the patio.
Right.
So you're not going to put another door, okay. Okay. It's a pretty fence, but it's bringing it out too far to the front of the house makes it look, just my opinion at this point, makes it look a little too wallish because it's, you want it to continue along your front wall. Is there any variation that you would accept going back somewhat onto the, back halfway back, back to the house, or is it okay if it stays at the back corner?
I mean, we'd like to extend it as much as possible just because we're already on a corner a lot, so the backyard is small as it is. Willing to maybe put up instead of a six-foot gate, maybe a four-foot gate.
Well, that would, if you, if you made that part of the fence four foot, you wouldn't need a variance.
Well, we would still need it for, lengthwise, we would still need the variance for the six-foot fence, but you can put a four-foot gate up to the, to be flush with the side of the house.
Right. And the fence, at this point, goes all the way around six foot toward, all the way back to the driveway, right? And then it comes up by the back of the house, which is kind of across your driveway.
Yes, there was already an existing fence there, so we just took that and put it in the same spot.
And it's all so six foot, all the way around. Is there any questions from the members?
Yeah, right, so right now, the fence that's there comes up just, includes the patio?
Yes, the patio's in fence.
And that's the end of it right now, so you just want to bring it up to the front of the house?
Yeah.
And it looks like the distance we're adding across is 12 feet?
It's actually, I think we measured today, it was, it's 10.
So you're, okay. When I looked at it, I thought, oh, fence is already up.
We just need the 22 feet, 22 extra feet.
Is there, is there a particular, I'm sorry, I'll let you finish.
No, go ahead, done.
I mean, it seems like there's plenty of yard in the back for the dogs to play in, anybody else. To come up along in between the two homes with a six-foot fence, it doesn't look like it's a necessity.
We, we would like a six-foot fence and to go up to the front of the house. I mean, it's just something we kind of wanted to do.
Have you talked to your neighbor on that left-hand side?
We tried.
And?
He didn't care. He, yeah.
They were going to come back over to the house and they never came either, so.
So, so you don't have an agreement with them that it's okay?
They know, they knew we were putting up the fencing. We asked them before we even put it up if they had a problem with it, if they wanted us to remove bushes that are literally in the, our property line split these bushes that are there and they just.
Whatever we gotta do.
Well, the way it is now is perfect, but getting the extra would be intrusive on their property also.
We have kids over, we could put the dogs in that, like a, be like a little dog run up on the side of the house. So we could separate the dogs from, if we have kids over or something.
Okay. Is there anybody else that would like to ask a question? No? Okay, thank you. Is there anybody that would like to speak in favor of this application? Please step forward. And is there anybody saying none? Is there anybody that would like to speak against this application? Please step forward. Seeing none, if there's anybody who just wants to ask about a fence, okay, we're good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. We'll close the, close the public input on that one.
Okay.
Yep, next on the agenda?
Next item is case number ZB 1704-1, upon the matter of request by Brian Culver for an area variance to construct a detached structure containing a two-car garage, porch, seasonal powder room, and one room on second floor exceeding maximum permitted height on premises 21 Medfield Drive in an R1 residential district.
Good evening.
Hi.
Hi.
Can you raise your right hand? Swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And your name, sir?
I'm Brian Culver. And just a point of information, on my application, I'm listed as executor to my mother's estate. And since the time of the filing, the deed has gone through and I now am the owner of the property.
Very good. Just for record sakes, do we have the, does that present the ownership to you?
Yes, that's the extra paperwork that I added into the packet. It shows the executor's deed.
Oh, that's what it says, executor's deed. I missed that, sorry.
I'm sorry.
Just an interesting factoid when I was researching the deed on the property. And the property was sold to my grandparents back in 1921, and I think that was before we even had zoning here in the town. And what, what property developers did to protect their interest back then, of course, was to put deed restrictions in, in the deeds as to what you were restricted in doing to the property. And I'd just like to read these, it's kind of interesting. "It is agreed as covenants running with this land and binding upon the second parties there, the executor's administration, blah, blah, blah. Said lot may be subdivided into not more than two lots, and nothing except single homes costing at least $4,000. Each shall be erected upon said lots. And the main walls thereof shall be at least 50 feet distance from the street and seven feet from the sidelines. No stable or garage shall be erected other than for private use, and the same shall set on the rear half of the lot and at least five feet from the side or rear lines unless attached to the house." And this was 1921, the year after prohibition. "No wine, spiritus, or malt liquors shall be made or sold on said premises." So anyways, I'm, I'm here to request kind of a special garage structure, certainly something more than my grandfather envisioned back in 1921. His was certainly a utilitarian structure, simply for the purposes of housing a car and enacting as a small workshop. And I guess in, in pursuit of happiness, I seek to do something a little better than that. I think one of the reasons he built it so small and with a low roof was that the power lines actually extend over the house and he could not put a gabled roof on. He was, he was pretty much forced to have a flat roof.
I notice you're having a bonus room with a powder room and a, like a sink and stuff?
Yes, there'd be a sink and a toilet.
I was also, the footprint, I'm trying to find something that will show me the footprint of the existing garage and the footprint of the new garage.
Let me see if I can clarify that for you.
I see, I see the map with the new garage, I believe.
Yeah, if you look at the, at the McMahon survey drawing, and you'll see within the footprint of the garage, there's three arrows, and that's pointing to the extremities of the existing 20 by 20 structure.
All right, I gotta find that one.
If I, if I can approach, I can just point it out to you.
Sure, could you? Because I, well, life of me, unless it's sticking to a page, I cannot get it.
I apologize for the small size.
No, that's all right. Front, back?
Yeah, let's see, it's just a picture.
Yeah, that's the one, okay. I had that one, but yeah, I can't.
See those three arrows there, the point, those three, those two are pointing to the back corners, and that's pointing to the front side. The 20 by 20 is the current structure.
All right. 20 by 20?
Yeah.
Okay, and then, all right, there we go. Okay, and you're going how many feet here? 25 by?
Oh, yes, it's.
24? 13 by 20 in the back, okay, I got it. I got it, yep.
I have full-size drawings if you.
No, that's okay. I just wanted to know the comparison of the existing versus the other.
The, the new garage.
You could step back to the mic, thank you.
The new garage is going to shift slightly away from the property line. It's a little close right now and gonna go to a full five-foot setback.
And, Michelle, for the sake of clarification, the overall square footage of the, of the new garage does not need a variance. It's just, from the front, it looks like we're just looking for a variance for the height for the dormers?
I believe so.
Yeah. With, with the proposed improvements, I'd be up to only 20% coverage of the lot.
And also the, the size of the garage itself meets the, the minimum, doesn't exceed the maximum allowable square footage.
Okay, all right. Is there any other questions from the board members?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify the location of this garage. Now, first of all, would you say that this current garage is dilapidated?
Yes, I indeed would, yes.
It's not worth fixing?
It really is not.
Would you, would you think that your neighbors would agree with that assessment?
Uh, yeah, I think you can take that to the bank.
I ask that because I already know they do. I think one of the pluses of this whole plan is that the garage is set back quite a bit further from the street.
Yes.
So even though it exceeds the code height, it's far enough back where it should not be something that's going to catch somebody's eye and say, oh, that looks way out of place, or that type of thing.
Yeah, I certainly hope so, yes. It's certainly not as tall as any of the surrounding houses, so.
Okay.
Any other questions from the board? Thank you.
Just, just one other point. I have with me tonight a map that was drawn back in the late 19-teens showing the entire Fairview subdivision. If any of you are interested in seeing it, I'll leave it up here for the duration of the evening.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Is there anybody here that would like to speak in favor of this application? Please step up. Please step up.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Christopher Burns. I live at 90 Kinnery Drive, just around the corner from Mr. Culver's property, and I'm here to speak in strong support of granting the area variance that Mr. Culver is pursuing. I can tell you from direct observation that Mr. Culver has been investing his blood, sweat, and tears in upgrading and renovating his home and the property. And the garage that he's proposing and asking for a variance to install on the property not only will be an enhancement to his property, but honestly to our neighborhood as well. And certainly, the garage that's there is definitely dilapidated and in need of quite an upgrade. But it's certainly something that architecturally is going to be an enhancement to our neighborhood. And frankly, the kind of investment that Mr. Culver is making in his property and in our neighborhood is the kind of investment that, as a community, we want to be encouraging.
Thank you very much.
Very much.
Yep, very good. Is there anybody else that would like to speak in favor of this applicant? Is there anybody that would like to speak in opposition of this applicant? Is there anybody that wants to talk about garages? Okay. That being said, we will close the public hearing on that one and move on to the next, please.
Next item on the agenda is case number ZB 1704-2, upon the matter of request by David Wallerak, acting as agent for David Hubert, for area variances to construct a garage addition exceeding maximum permitted garage width and with less than required front setback on premises 60 Thandera Lane in an R1 residential district.
Hi, this is, I'm David Wallderick. I'm an architect and I'm representing David Hubert.
And if you guys would, raise your right hand and say that you will tell the truth, so help you God.
So help me God.
Thank you.
David has, the existing garage is 22 feet wide, and the useful area of the, of the existing garage is difficult to use because David is in a wheelchair. And there's a ramp actually at the back of the existing garage that takes up quite a bit of room, so the turning radiuses and so forth in that existing garage make it very difficult to bring groceries in and that type of thing. He actually has the back end to his garage, which I think you can appreciate is rather difficult, so that he can get out on the right-hand side and actually go along the, the side of the garage and go up the ramp. So at this point, we're looking at trying to add another bay onto the garage, and that would give him the ability to pull in a car and you've got a, you'd have a turning radius. I've shown it on the site plan, floor plan. So there's, that circle there is a turning radius, and he would be able to get into the existing garage and then go up the ramp. And we're looking for relief on the, on two issues. One is the overall width of the allowable garage width, which would be 30 feet, and we are at 40 point, 40.58 feet. So we're looking for relief of about 10 feet there. And, and then the, the front yard setback, we, we make the setback if you extend the dimension right from the corner of the, of the new garage out to the center of the road, but, but taking the smallest distance, which is not, let's say perpendicular, perpendicular, we're, we're a little shy of that by three feet.
The new garage addition will actually be set back from the garage that's there, but the only reason you're looking for that setback of variance is because of the way the house is positioned into, in terms of the way the road is positioned.
Well, there's a couple of reasons for it. Actually, there's, there's a door there that we wanted to leave. Also aesthetically, by setting it back a little further, it does tend to work better with the house. It's not like right on top of you. So, you know, to, to your point, yes, the, the road does come around at that point, and it just makes sense to pull that, that front of the garage back.
Any questions from the board members?
You're gonna need some grading for this, right?
I'm sorry?
Grading?
Oh, yes, grading, sure.
And I, a lot of times that's included on these drawings, exactly, you know, what that is and what it's going to be made out of. I'm assuming you've got the whole idea of how you're gonna raise that back up.
Yeah, we, we did speak to the planner and, when we were talking about this, and we will provide silt fences and, and erosion control as we're, as we're building this because there is a retaining pond back there, and we want to make sure that that's all done in the right way. And, and we will be grading it to, to tie in with the existing grade as it is right now, and then we'll, we'll put the, the required vegetation down.
What approximately is that grade? Three, four feet, or is it less than that?
I'm sorry, which grade?
To the very back of the new garage, from the ground.
So that, let me just look at the elevation here. There's about, if, if you look at the back of the, of the, of the new addition, let's say, there's, there's about two, there's actually about six feet of height between the floor and, and the grade in back.
Will you be, will you be adding footers down, a taller, a taller footer to compensate for the grade?
Absolutely.
Right.
Yeah, the, the footings have to be three foot six below grade, so as it declines this way, we'd have to have our footings.
So you're actually gonna put that much fill in there, or you're just gonna, you're gonna be filling inside the footer, not outside the fill?
Correct. That's right.
Okay, so you'll just be filling there?
Yeah, it'll be engineered fill, it'll be, you know, compacted, and then a slab will be poured over it, and then we'll have steel rods that tie in the, the outside wall with the slab, so it's kind of.
So it won't separate?
Yep.
The existing wall, the outside wall where you're attaching to, that's staying? You're just putting a door going, passage door going through?
Yeah, the exterior door, or the exterior wall is staying, and there's a very short area along that wall where we will be actually putting, the foundation wall will actually come around and turn because we want to make sure that, with, with all the fill that's there, we don't want to pop out the, the basement of the adjacent, you know, existing house. So there will be a return of, almost like a little retaining wall to support, help support that.
My question to you just is, from that garage to the existing garage, is that gonna be, there's a doorway there?
Yes.
What I've seen in that corner?
Yes, there will be a door. Sorry, I.
It's okay.
Will you be eliminating the wall between the two garages?
No, there's just gonna be a doorway.
A doorway?
Yeah.
Like near where that circle is?
At this point in time, right, David? Just, just a door. Yeah, the door will be a three-foot door, but that's all we would be doing.
Floors will be the same?
Yes.
Same, right level?
Do I understand you correctly too that the circle is actually like a turntable?
No, it's.
It's a wheelchairs, so when I get out.
It's, it's a planning device that, that we use to make sure that there's enough room for a wheelchair to pivot and, and turn around.
So the floor doesn't move?
No.
Okay. I, I know it sounds, it sounds silly, but I've seen, I've actually seen it.
Any other questions from the board? Is there anybody that would like, thank you, gentlemen. Is there anybody that would like to speak in favor of this application? Step up. If there's anybody that would like to speak against this application, step up. If there's anybody who wants to talk about garages. Okay, good. Then we'll close that.
Thank you.
And move on to the next, so thank you. Ready? You want to talk about the two structures?
Well, I was gonna potentially recommend that Michelle could call the next two public hearings consecutively. They are two properties that are adjacent to one another. They have, they share the same owner, so the same, the applicant can get up once and provide testimony to the board. Might just make it easier from a efficiency standpoint, if that's, if the board's amenable to that.
That's okay with me.
Okay, I'll hand it over to Michelle then. Thank you. First item is ZB, case number ZB 1704-3, upon the matter of request by John Kasani, Kashani, excuse me, for area variances to demolish and construct a new single-family dwelling with less than required front, rear, and side setbacks and exceeding maximum permitted lot coverage and height on premises 423 Lakefront in an R2 residential district. Second case is ZB 1704-4, upon the matter of request by John Kashani for area variances to demolish the existing structure and construct a new single-family dwelling with less than required front, rear, and side setbacks and exceeding maximum permitted lot coverage and height on premises 419 Lakefront in an R2 residential district.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. My name is John Kashani. I reside at 893 DeWitt Road in Webster.
You would? Swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
So help me God.
Thank you. Go ahead, state your.
I, I'm here to ask for variances for both 419 and 423 Lake Shore. My hope is to demolish the two houses that are already there, and I'm requesting the relief from the board to allow two new houses to be reconstructed on those sites. I, you know, I. I, you know, I believe both houses will be improvements to the existing houses that are there now, and I might add that the town has worked real hard with the previous owner to try to get him to fix up the house, or eventually, I think there was a town board resolution that called for the one house to be removed. I'm a mortgagee on the property, and that's when I stepped in to take action. I know your town does not like zombie houses, and this was happening with these properties, and, you know, as a mortgagee, I feel I stepped in, I tried to avoid the town having to deal with the demolition, and took responsibility. I've been working with town staff for almost a year now, and, you know, we're at a point where hopefully we can take these houses down and seek permits for new houses.
And you're seeking some variances for setbacks on the front and rear setback, if I'm reading this correctly, and also side setback?
That's correct, Mr. Chairman.
The, this is, it's set that it's supposed to be a 30-foot front and rear. We're requesting a three-foot front and rear, so a 27-foot variance, right? Because it wasn't written in my packet here. And then the width of the lot is supposed to be 30, if I'm reading this correctly? And we're looking for, it doesn't make any sense the way it's written on my variance code, see?
I think if you refer to the map that was provided...
So it's three feet, is that what you meant?
I believe in R2, your minimum lot width is 80 feet.
Okay. So you're, what are you requesting for your side setback?
I'm requesting three feet.
Okay.
For all side setbacks.
And then three?
As a minimum setback.
Three feet for the front and three feet for the back?
Yes, sir.
On both of them, or just one of them?
Well, I...
I got it on 423.
As 423 is drawn, clearly there's a three-foot front setback. Now, the staff from the town has talked with me about taking the lot that's on Delta, and that's been a little newer since this first came in.
Right.
And what I was encouraged to do was to split the lot on Delta.
Right.
So that it can no longer be built on, and allow half of that lot to assist in accessing 419, and the other half of that lot assist in accessing 423, seeing as how both of those lots currently are landlocked.
Right. You own that other lot?
Yes, I do.
And were you gonna make driveway out of it, or?
I think the idea now would be to put a driveway up the center, so to keep some green space on either side of the driveway, and just have a common access agreement between the neighbors to use that driveway to access both of their houses.
In a turnaround spot?
I'm sorry?
At a spot for them to turn around at the back, or just?
Well, I, you know, right now, if it's common access, I'm sure we can get them in and out, and I think a turnaround would be a nice idea that could hopefully be shared by both neighbors.
Okay. It's just, that's the way it's drawn on your map here, and that's why I mentioned it. It's like a, it's like a spot to back up so that they can come in and pull out.
Now, the reason I'm talking about this was because the initial idea of that front setback, that front setback may increase now, and I would not be opposed to this board making it a condition of the front setback issues, that they don't go any more than, any less than the three feet of what's existing there now.
Right. The front, because this is a unique lot, is facing the lake, right? Or is that considered the back?
It's whatever you want to call it.
In this instance, the front lot line would be the lot line that's split but heading toward the water, so, because Lakefront is the source of the address.
Right.
And so, the only one that fronts on Delta Terrace is the one that's, that sort of little piece that would be eventually turned and be utilized for the driveway.
So the front is out where the decks are?
Correct.
Facing the water?
Okay.
Okay. And then to continue that, there's a maximum lot coverage of 25%, which is 653 square foot, and we're looking for 1,440 square foot, which is a 30% variance of 786 square feet. Is that correct? And this is on number 423?
Yes, sir, that sounds correct to me, and if I could add to that, because, you know, certainly these requests may seem exorbitant, however, if we do subdivide that lot on Delta Terrace, that'll change these numbers considerably, because the lot coverages, now the lot areas will be much greater than what exists there right now.
Yes.
And there's nothing very unique about these requests in terms to the, in terms of the character of the neighborhood. One of the houses here is actually built over a lot line, and I think onto the neighbor, or at least the overhang is onto the neighbor. I'm asking for three feet, so that'll straighten that out. A neighbor on the other side is two feet from my lot line. I can't change that, but I can, you know, accept three feet from the lot line.
How close are the two houses, right, currently, those?
The, currently?
Yeah, you're saying the ones...
Well, again, they're all twisted, and everybody's on each other's lots, and, you know, there's apparently been, you know, issues in the neighborhood, and then fences being built where people can't open their window and reach out because there's a fence, right? I mean, they're, you know, hopefully the three feet helps clean up a lot of the pre-existing problems that exist with these two houses and how they react with their neighboring houses.
Are you going to divide that other lot on Delta, or are you going, and combine the, combine that property with these other two lots?
Yeah, with the encouragement of the town staff, they pretty much felt that it would be better to subdivide that lot on Delta and give those areas to the, to the neighboring houses.
Right, one...
To the, I'm sorry.
One side to the one house, one side to the other.
419, one to 423.
Right, okay.
My problem is that we're looking at basically three lots. Two of them have houses on them, one does not. But if that empty lot is divided up, it's gonna change, as you say, it was gonna change the numbers quite a bit. And my problem is trying to conceptualize and think positively that this is a good thing without actually seeing it laid out. It seems to me that I would like, certainly like to see a map that shows really where these houses are gonna be, and how that affects, well, front and side setbacks for sure, but also what the people living there are gonna have to cope with, as far as getting in and out and turning around and all that kind of stuff.
Russ, you have, on your, the last pulled-out map, shows the exact layout into the lot that they'll be sitting.
This one?
You said you wanted...
You talking about this one?
Yeah, yep. You wanted to see how they were gonna be laid out?
This isn't helping me at all, because I, there's still two houses on two lots and an empty third lot. I want to see is what it's gonna look like with two houses on three lots.
This way, this one here. There's a, there's a, hang on. The second page, this is the one, the two different houses. This is the third lot here. The third lot's gonna be a driveway access to the back of these two houses. This is lot here, this is a lot, and this is a lot.
What's that number 27?
That's another house, that's somebody else's house.
Oh! Oh, we just have to tear that down?
No, no.
I didn't realize that, I thought that was an empty lot.
No, there, it's behind, it's behind. It comes right...
In addition to the lot area that you were talking about moments ago, both of these lots also own lakefront lots, they're separate tax numbers. One is 14,188 square feet, another one is 11,256 square feet. Combined, those are over a half an acre of additional land. I don't think it's the town's desire to attach these to the existing houses, however, those will always remain married to the new homes that...
You do own those, those are...
Yes, yes.
What's gonna be the distance between the two houses? We talking six feet, is that what you're saying?
I'm saying a minimum of six feet.
It's a little tight.
Well, again, I'm talking about a neighborhood that houses are built over the lot lines. Overhangs are over the lot lines.
I understand that, but my concern is, if one were to catch fire, how close is the other one?
Well, I know there's gonna be some, you know, issues that are going to have to be dealt with that will comply with the New York State Fire Code, and I'm sure the fire commissioner will be talking about the allowed material.
I was gonna provide a clarification for that. New York State Building Code sets forth requirements for minimum fire separation, depending on the form of construction, and so there can be a zero lot setback, a zero setback for, to the building line, which allows a building to come right up to the edge of a property if the proper materials for construction are utilized for a given project. And so that's something that would, the town would ensure that the New York State-required building materials were utilized if a, if a setback of less than five feet were to be approved.
Yeah, because I know at Seabreeze that happened between two higher buildings, the guy hit a lower one, and, you know, the roof lines were over the top of his house, 109 yards, so.
So it's a matter of building material and enforcing, New York State Code requires for certain types of, like, say for standard wood construction, the minimum is a five-foot minimum to the, to the lot line. There are other materials that can be utilized for residential construction that can exceed that minimum and can go to a zero setback.
And we went over the variances for 423, which is the house that is furthest to the west, right?
423 is furthest to the east, I believe.
Yep. Can I read that, Russ?
423, I believe, was the, was the one that the town issued the resolution to have demolished.
And just as a point of clarification, that was a town board action that was taken under the town's unsafe structure provision. Under the former owner, the, there was an order to demolish that was issued to the structure located at 423 Lakefront, based on the existing conditions of the building. And so, the, in this instance, the, the action would be undertaken by the current owner of the property and would be responding to and following through on an order to demolish that was issued by the town board. 419 was not subject to town board action.
All right, so I, I've got the variances written down for 423, and now I'm looking at the variances for 419. Again, this is written confusing. Front setback on 419 is saying they're requesting a 10-foot front setback, which, okay, because the deck is on the side of the house.
Yep.
Very good, okay. So that's a 20-foot variance. And then the rear setback is requesting 18, 12-foot variance, and that is because that...
Is it tangled with the property?
Because the house is further forward, the lot's longer, it's a pie-shaped lot almost, and there's some length there. Okay, all right, so that makes sense. I would've thought they were exactly the same, but I'm looking at the map, now I know why they're different. And then the width of the lot, the variance is requesting three feet, or the request is three feet, and the variance is 1.8 feet, different than the other one, which was three feet. Right?
For the other one, it's not really clear whether or not a variance is, are we certain that a variance is required for the side setback for the prior lot, because it looks like the 10% is three feet permitted?
Except the minimum requirement, it's 10% of width of the lot with a minimum of five feet in our pursuant to the code.
So this one should be five feet as well, not 4.8 as a requirement?
Well, you're, you can ask for the relief from the code to have it be less than five, and as long as this board can grant that, as long as the applicant were to either obtain the necessary relief from New York State Building Code, there is a variance process through New York State, or utilizing the materials that would not make it subject to that five-foot minimum.
Right, so I think this is a two-foot variance and not a 1.8 as well, if it's a five-foot. Thank you.
And then the next variance is lot coverage, and this lot coverage is allowed 871 square feet. We're looking for 1,440 square feet, and the variance will be 569 square feet, less than the, less than four, house 423 is 419, so that, and I didn't go over the height on 423, but I think the variance is the same on both. The height is allowed 24 feet, and we're requesting 25 feet, so there is a one-foot variance on both homes for the height. And it is measured from the elevation to the average pitch of the roof, I believe, right? So there's a one-foot variance requested there. I think I got through them all. Is there any questions from the board members?
Excuse me, Chairman, I'd like to point out one other potential variance in this application. We apologize that staff, we didn't catch this prior to going to the board, but the driveway, we want to just double-check the allowable width of the driveway. Our code indicates 35% of the width of the lot, and the area fronting on Delta Terrace, we're just gonna quickly double-check to see whether or not that may exceed the 35% threshold for the width.
What is, what is the current width of that driveway?
Well, I've got to get a calculation of the width of the lot, and I'll be checking that really quickly.
Could you, do you know, sir, the width of the driveway right now, as you've got it drawn?
I have, I'm sorry, I apologize. So the, the width of, the current width of the lot on that, fronts on Delta Terrace is 43 feet. So then, if we do the math, we know that the proposed...
Twenty-one and a half each side?
Yeah, so that, the way it's measuring, so in terms of looking at the proposed paved area that's gonna share that driveway, looks like the proposed width is, and I'm sorry, the...
The print's so small, I can't read it.
Well...
It's because it's not there. But I would suggest it would be 18 feet wide, which, again, I think the fire department might be interested, because it would be considered a private drive?
No, but it's just a driveway.
And they wouldn't care if two people used it?
It's a, it would be a shared driveway. And so that's, that's allowable. It's not a private drive, it's a driveway.
Okay. So if it were 18 feet, would... Okay, so if it were 18 feet, would that be acceptable for the minimum width?
I'm gonna, bear with me for a moment, as I do math on live television. Hang on one second. So, the, I apologize. So, the proposed, the proposed width of the driveway would represent a 41%, or let's call it 42% width of the lot, so it would be, that would also represent, I would indicate a variance, would, you'd, this board would wanna contemplate that as part of this application and grant the driveway width variance on the Delta Terrace portion.
But that's not part of the, this application doesn't include Delta Terrace, that, that lot, so would that be a separate?
No, it's not, it's, I mean, it's presented as part of the application, and I would defer to our, our deputy town attorney if I'm incorrect, but it's presented as part of the overall plan. The two homes are referenced in the, in the application and on the agenda, but the plans that are presented show that third lot as the means of ingress and egress to the two lots, and so, we can include it as part of this board's contemplation and review.
Should we mention the address?
We certainly can, we can actually, more importantly, mention the tax ID number, which is tax number 047.66-01-26.
Okay, do you know the address, sir?
On Delta Terrace?
Yeah, no? Okay.
57.
57, somebody said?
It's really safe to just stick with the tax ID number.
Tax ID, pronounce, so we know. And then, we would need the, the variance would be, how many feet?
It would be, represent, it would, the-
Code would allow?
The code allows 35%, and the requested width of the driveway would be at 42%.
Forty-two percent, so the variance is 7%, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any more to add, sir?
Uh, no, nothing that I can think of, unless anyone else has any other questions.
Any other questions from the board members?
Well, we got a letter, I don't know if anybody came to, I guess we got it tonight, a letter from Caroline Andrews, who I believe lives in the house that I didn't realize existed when I first looked at it. This is the, the third lot, and her concern is about how close these houses are to one another, invasion, I shouldn't say invasion, lack, due to lack of privacy and that type of thing. And I just wanna make sure that whatever this board decides, we don't do it without considering what she's, what her concerns are. Took the time to write the letter. One of the things that I would like to see on these maps is where the other homes are located. I mean, we just see a blank spot, that's why I thought it was an empty lot. Well, it's not empty lot, so if we vote on a decision that infringes on that lot, I wanna know where the house is.
Sir, I happen to have a survey map of the author's lot, and I too just got this letter tonight. There's two points maybe, if you would allow me to make. My first point is, she talks about the width of the house, the houses, the two houses I proposed were 24 feet wide. Ms. Andrews' house is 26 feet wide, so in terms of the neighborhood, her house is actually a little wider than what I'm proposing here. I'm proposing three-foot side setback lines, and Ms. Andrews is, I believe, 2.8 feet. And so, you know what we learn about those of us, pardon me?
2.3.
2.3 feet. And, you know, no, no pun intended, but what, you know, we live in glass houses, we gotta be careful what stones we throw. But she does have good, good points, and the best point I can share with you about Ms. Andrews is, unlike so many neighbors and when people come to discuss development, they want to object to development, Ms. Andrews has actually put forth an acceptable purchase offer with me to buy the lot, and power move to the hoop for somebody that steps up and says, "I don't really wanna see all this happen," but she put a purchase offer in that I'm certain will be accepted, so that she can own that lot. And I commend her for doing that.
This is the house she's living in now? Is, is this the house she's living in?
Are all you folks from this neighborhood over here?
Sir?
I'm sorry.
Gus, okay. Is, is this the house you're talking about, she's put a purchase offer on the house she's living in now?
She lives in the house to the west of these two lots.
Okay.
So, she lives here?
Her, and she's the one that wrote you a letter that we all received today, and she does have legitimate concerns.
She wants the purchase order for?
She wants to buy the lot number 419.
The middle one?
Oh, the further one.
The one next door to her.
Oh, so she's on the other side, I'm thinking she's the one that's right where Delta Terrace is.
No, sir.
She's on the other side.
She's on the other side.
All right.
The, the two lots I have, she has the next lot to the west, and this gentleman over here, I think, has the, the survey map.
Okay.
If you might wanna pass that down to the chairman.
Okay, so she's at 27?
She's at 411, I believe.
Right.
Oh, it might be lot number 27, I'm sorry.
No, I think it's lot number three.
So, she's in lot number 27?
No, sir, it's number three.
Yeah.
Here. That's hers, yes.
Okay, and she wants to buy which lot?
The one right next door to her. 29.
Wait, isn't that where you wanna build it?
Right.
My, my, listen, I'm just trying to get out of a mess that somebody that borrowed money put me into, and, you know, we're just trying to move forward. She wants to buy the lot, I'm a home builder, I don't have to build these homes, it's more important to go in to a neighborhood, clean up the problem that's there, and if she wants to buy the lot next door to her, I'm more than glad to, you know, have her buy the lot, I don't have to build the house.
Mr. Chairman, then, then wouldn't it be wiser to maybe table this until, 'cause we're voting on something that may not come to pass, if he's saying he's willing this out to her?
Oh, we could, we could take a vote on it in reference to approving it or, or not, and then, if we approve it and he doesn't wanna do it, that's his business. You know, if, if in the event he sells one lot, both lots in the meantime, he doesn't have to build, it's not obligating him to do it if he finds another way out of the properties. I think if we don't, and then he doesn't make a deal, he's gonna have to come back and, and do this again. That would be my only-
You're absolutely right.
So, it's good that he's got a tentative deal, working with the neighbor, and at this point, we've got two applications we need to look at and, and go from there, is that?
Well, 'cause I'm thinking, 'cause for lot 26, would this affect, let's say she does buy, wouldn't it affect lot 26, or is that agreement, we say shared driveway on lot 26 between 28 and 29, what effect would that have on her?
Well, lot, if I'm reading this correctly, lot 26 is the one that's right next to Delta Terrace, right?
That's the driveway lot I think you're referring to, you're referring to the driveway lot?
The driveway lot.
Well, then, again-
No.
No, I, um-
Are you asking if he were to sell one lot, would that affect your approvals as they relate to the driveway?
Correct.
And I think the, the answer would be no, he could construct, he's still asking for the driveway to be the width that it is, whether or not when he sells it, he grants the right to access using that same driveway, or there's some other type of arrangement, the, the approvals would still be the same.
And frankly, if he did sell the properties, properties, property separately, that Delta Terrace lot is still very helpful for that last remaining house, or the, the other house that he'd like to build.
I would draw my objection.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
Yes, and this might be inappropriate, so let me know. Just, am I getting the sense that these are gonna be rental properties or for sale, or is that not even appropriate to ask? I don't know.
Um, well, first of all, I know Arandaquay collects $500 if it becomes rental, but that's not my choice, I don't wanna rent houses, and I'm not building, nor would I build them for rental. I, I think these would be, you know, as many of the lakefront houses in your town, they'd be rather expensive houses. And I don't think these would look out of character with, you know, other lakefront houses that are in the town, and there's been many properties that have been bought, and the structures removed, and newer homes have been built, and I think you're gonna continue to see that along your lakefront and your bayfront in, in the town of Arandaquay. And this just seems to be the logical move, the houses are in such disarray-
Yeah.
-that it seems unlikely to turn them around and make good viable homes out of them, given the condition that they're in. And I think there's people in this room that can attest to the condition of those houses, and how they've been used the last eight or 10 years.
They're both empty, right?
Yes, they are. Well, they're supposed to be, but I hear rumors that people live in the houses at times.
Okay, any other questions? Thank you, and now I'm gonna open it up, is there anybody here that would speak in favor of this application? Please step up.
Could I get that map back for me?
Here, this one here. Is there anybody that would speak against this application? Please step up. And if there's more than one, form a line, one at a time. State your name.
Nedstoke, 423 Lakefront, I'm on the Delta, I'm at 425, I'm on the Delta side at 423. All right, my concerns are environmental impact now with building these, this is like an erosion zone area, and that lot that he's talking about putting a driveway in, that's a wetland. Anytime it rains, it floods, and it floods in between the property I live at and at 423. These are things that have to be taken into consideration, I don't know, he wants to build a two-story house, what kind of foundation is he putting in? I also have a 200-year-old white oak tree, which has a tree trunk of a 13-foot diameter. Now, if we're gonna be digging a foundation, and we destroy the root pattern of that tree, and that tree falls on my house, what's gonna happen then? You know, I, these are things that need to be addressed. Also, the back of these houses, from Delta Terrace all the way to Madison, there's pedestrian easements that have been put in place, and he's gonna build right over those, so what do those just go away because he bought the property?
Is it the back or the front facing the lake?
The back, no, the, the front, but there's also private walkways that go behind the houses for like the mailman, and because those three houses there, there's actually, yeah, three houses are landlocked.
Does it continue down past those?
Goes straight through, goes straight through from street to street. But it's, it's not for a public right-of-way, which is the front of Lakefront. Now, there's also a sanitary sewer easement there that's imposed by the town, where'd she go? She's gone? These are things that ought to be taken into consideration here, and I'm looking at these plans, they're pretty vague. So, I just wanna make sure, you know, I mean, what are we gonna blacktop over a, a lot that floods? What's gonna happen with all that subsurface water? It's gonna all go into my basement?
In reference to what we're looking at, we're looking at easements and setbacks, variations.
Right, so he's gonna build right over one of the easements?
But in reference to your concern with the building part of it, that falls back-
Well, this is, this is entirely different, I'm all for him taking them houses down, I have no objection to that, but as far as the new construction goes, I, I would like to see something a little more detailed than what he rode up in the parking lot 10 minutes before he walked in here.
Well, I hope not, but my point is, is it has, whatever he builds, has to meet with town, uh, building.
And New York State Building Code.
And the building code, so, so he's not just gonna put up something without our approval, not our zoning board approval, but the, the town building-
Right, but my concerns are, is he aware of, of all the issues with the environmental impact we're gonna have with, with digging up this property? Being where it's at, being on the lake, in an erosion zone, and I have serious drainage problems there with stormwater, number one. Number one, it's a huge issue. And that lot he wants to blacktop is a pond every time it rains, and it, it's bad. So, if we blacktop over there, where's all that water gonna go?
Well, again, there's-
I mean, I realize that might not be a part of tonight's issue, but I mean, I'm all for the guy taking the houses down, that's great.
Right.
But as far as building these, these two houses, they're too big, I don't wanna see them.
Okay.
That's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Douglas Knippel, I live at 44 Madison Terrace, and I purchased the property I live in now in July of 2015, after serving as a professor, doing research and teaching at Cornell University for 30 years. I retired to this community because I liked the quietude, and I was hopeful for the improvement of this neighborhood. Now, I say hopeful, I should put that into context, because there's zombie property immediately to the south of my property, 36 Madison Terrace. There's another zombie property northwest of my house and across the street, two houses up. There are these two zombie properties that we're considering tonight, and so, my partner and I were cognizant of the notion that this could, this neighborhood could go either way, so we are definitely in favor of seeing constructive improvements in the neighborhood. However, I have a number of serious concerns about what's been proposed here tonight, and also, to follow up on comments alluded by the previous gentleman, I think the, the plans that are presented here for this board to consider are extremely vague. And I say that based on my experience serving as a zoning board member in the town of, in the city of Geneva for several years, hearing some couple hundred cases. And so, I think that additional work would be required, you have questions about lot number 26 and the driveway, which is not adequately addressed here. There are issues with, with regard to the setbacks in particular are of concern to me. 41% lot requirement, lot coverage, and an extremely large amount of asphalt. I live in what, if any of you have this map, lot number 10 on Madison Terrace, and my second floor office looks directly out over the zone where these properties are proposed. I can see the area that's proposed for the driveway and parking lot behind 28 and 29, and the egress on 26, and I'm concerned that this would disrupt my evening quietude when I do most of my writing. Those concerns aside, I have another concern, which was alluded to, which is that the lakeshore itself is pedestrian right-of-way, which was granted when the railroad went out of business to, and their property owners throughout Somerville who have lake rights, and as a consequence of wealthy property owners purchasing properties near these, access to these right-of-ways, pedestrian right-of-ways have been increasingly restricted. We have rich people who have, who are over towards the Gold Coast, who have put up chain-link gates with locks on them, barring egress into public right-of-way. And we see more and more of this kind of stuff. People with money can come in and buy property, and they say, "Well, I need more setback than I'm allowed." But this is an impediment not only on the two adjacent property owners, but also on the public, which has seen its ability, I'm, I'm a deed owner, of the public access to the lake, and we have seen historically, not in my time here, but this right increasingly just taken away little by little, as a consequence of, I would have to say, probably by some decisions made by this board. And I would like to see that stopped, just as a matter of principle. I also enjoy walking, and I walk my dog along there every day, I think that having a deck protrude all the way out to the path, or, you know, in, in excess of, of town zoning is, is an unreasonable invasion, if you will, of, of, of a public access. And so, I oppose this. I would love to see these two places torn down, they were drug houses when, when I first moved in, I was aware of that, and as I say, they're now zombie properties, people probably go into them occasionally. So, I would love to see them torn down, but I'd rather see one large property, one large house built on these two lots, and a much more modest development of asphalt behind the property because of the reason stated by the previous gentleman. I have a sump pump in my house, and everybody on my street- I have a sump pump in my house, and everybody on my street with a basement, who has a basement, have sump pumps. And these sump pumps operate all the time. There's incredible hydrologic pressure operating on this, what is essentially an eroding terminal moraine. So, with those points, I just, you know, have to state that the way this is presented right now, I think you ought to table it and consider a more complete package that takes into account some of these neighborhood concerns.
So, what's your address and where do you live?
44 Madison Terrace.
Madison Terrace.
Yes. That's lot number 10 on this map. I don't know the tax code.
So, in reference to the pavement, I mean, for the third lot, there are ways to make it pervious so that water can drain. It could, you know, they do make driveways like that now.
Where's it going to go?
Well, again, it would be no different than where it goes now. So, you know, if it can be done, and again, I got to leave that up to the town building department to come up with the reasonable way to do it. Now, in reference to, you know, the tearing down those old houses that are dilapidated, you know, it's the right thing to do.
It's a desirable thing to do, I agree.
Right, it's the right thing to do. And what we've seen as far as a plan in front of us, it looks like he's going to build a couple of nice houses, assuming he builds both of them. You know...
I'm specifically against having two houses built on two lots that are, in aggregate, they have 48 feet of frontage.
Okay.
The, I mean, the request is for variances for basically every physical parameter, which I find rather extreme.
I, okay, I appreciate it and thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Sir, excuse me, sir, for the record, I missed your name. I'm sorry.
Last name is Knippel, K-N-I-P-P-L-E.
Great, thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Scott Hecker, 60 Madison Terrace. First, I'd like to actually thank Mr. Cacianni for taking an interest in the neighborhood and trying to correct the problem with these two properties. I think that the application also lacks the fact that all new construction requires two off-street parking, and that was never addressed in this, in the initial application. If it's being addressed as the side issue for this vacant lot, don't all the people within a certain radius have to be advised of this meeting? And I'm not sure that they all were. So, those are a couple of issues that I have. You addressed the fact of the fire safety, which is one thing that I was concerned with. And I do under, I worked, I worked at the town for 23 years in the building department. I realized that, you know, you can build close, closer than the required distance. However, to do that, it would, no windows, you know, firewalls, all that kind of stuff. I'm not sure that Mr. Cacianni would be up to doing that. And you addressed the fact that it would require variance for a wider driveway than the 35% on that. So, those are the issues I wanted to bring up.
Thank you.
Okay.
Good evening. My name's Karen Candido. I live at 425 Lakefront. It's on the delta side of these two properties. First of all, I would like to say that I am very thankful and relieved to Mr. Cacianni for taking over these properties. However, I do have some concerns, and one concern that I have is that Mr. Cacianni is going to have these plans okayed by the board, and then he's going to sell these lots to someone else to build on. And I want to know if Mr. Cacianni is really going to be the one building on these lots. My second concern is, again, with the drainage. I heard you say something about the water is just going to go where it went before. Well, it's eroding the land in between the houses. It's not just going somewhere, it's not seeping back into the ground. You know, it's going to the edges of the cliff, and it's eroding the cliff. And I tried to, you know, get the neighbor that lived there before to go in, you know, to maybe put some sort of weeping system in it. He wanted nothing to do with that, and, I mean, that's a whole nother story, but the drainage definitely has to be dealt with. I guess, my other question is that if, if he doesn't get the variances to build the houses there, I just want to make sure that 423 Lakefront still gets torn down because that was already decided before any of this happened. You know, it was, it was supposed to be demolished.
Ma'am, can I ask a question over here? Your house is the one that's right on Delta?
Yep.
And you had a, your house is like half-new, right?
Yeah.
The second half or the back half is, how long ago was that done?
2006.
Okay. Did you have that done or did...
Yes, I had it done.
Looks nice.
I have absolutely no problem with, you know, two-story, nice houses there. I just think they're too big. I mean, for him to build two houses that are going to be six feet apart from each other? I mean, why can't he just scale it down a little bit? You know, that's all we're really asking for, you know? We don't want two big boxes there with, you know, six bedrooms crammed into it, you know? I mean, I know he wants to make money, but, you know, he's got to think about the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Robert Dates, 40 Delta Terrace. I've been a leading voice a long time about knocking down the crack houses there, but this is not the answer. I've been in the neighborhood 15 years. I have a feeling, if you look at those blueprints, you have a master bedroom downstairs, a tiny kitchenette, a tiny dining room, a tiny living room, three bedrooms upstairs and bathrooms. Two of them side by side reeks to me of a weekend rental party situation, where any schnooki and Mike the Situation could be down there treating our neighborhood like absolute hell. Put in the beach and a few boaters out in the lake hooking up with them, and you've got Margies all over again in our neighborhood, with kids walking down the trail, old folks walking their dog. You've got beer runs at 12:30 at night coming down our street to feed the party. All right? Those are not plans for people to live. Those are plans for people to party their balls off. All right?
Excuse me, sir.
And I'm going to tell you right now.
Be careful.
Understood. I have no problem with John being a businessman, making his money, and God bless him, he stepped in. This is not the solution. In all due respect to the town of Arundicote, you have got a mall that's been played on for 12 years or so. All right? You've got land down here on Titus, the 33 acres is your next mess. You've got I-Square you can't stay the way out of, and you've got lightning hitting your town barn. Not, please don't mess this up for us. If you're going to step up for quality of life in our neighborhood in the town of Arundicote, this is not it. But a house with a family structure and that driveway, that's not, that's a parking lot on an absolute quagmire. There's four inches of standing water on all those lots right now, tonight. Four inch, and you're going to put a parking lot there for 10 cars that could hold? You're going to wash down the bluff. I don't even know what the foundation is. What's the foundation? Is it a slab? It doesn't matter. It is such a pit of water in there.
Again, sir, not to reiterate myself, but it'll have to meet the town building codes.
I understand the code, sir. I'm saying the perk test on that ground can't handle any code you've got going for two houses that size.
Well, again, the building department will make sure that it's...
This is my issue with the building department. After seeing how the building department handled the previous owner with a terrific way 423 is being put together with cinder blocks on the ground, the faith is a little thin. I would, I would monitor that situation closely. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to speak for or against this application? Please step up if there's anybody that would like to just ask a question.
Again, Scott Hecker, 60 Madison Terrace. I would like to say regarding that driveway situation, that my concern would be if in the winter they're going to put their boats, their trailers, their campers and all that on that property. Because it's going to be strange whether it's combined or not combined. If it's not combined, it's considered a buildable lot and is a driveway, quote, parking lot, allowed as a single thing on a buildable lot.
Two things. One, I was going to say that the town does have codes that speak to the storage on, in residential districts related to RV, camper, any other recreational vehicles, both in the summer and in the wintertime. So, there's codes that would govern that. As far as the, our understanding is that the proposal would be to split that one lot to then go to the other two, and so in which case there wouldn't be a standalone lot serving as just a driveway.
All right, okay.
But if that were being proposed, this board could grant the relief necessary for that to happen.
Okay, and this, is this being considered now, this splitting of the property, or is it not being considered?
So, there's, he's seeking the required variances that go along with that. This board doesn't handle subdivision or re-subdivision approvals. So, they'd be granting, they'd be asked to grant the relief in the code, and then a subsequent approval would be, may be needed for the contemplation of the change of subdivision lot lines.
Okay, now, the people who are within, how many feet are supposed to be notified? Have they been notified?
They have. The mailer went to 27 property, properties within the, within 200 feet.
And you're required within how many feet?
200 feet.
All right, but was the Delta Terrace...
They're right next to each other, so when you do the 200-foot circum, radius around, because these were located right near each other, the Delta Terrace lot wouldn't have triggered more than likely an addition, an additional notification. We expand the circle pretty wide. Often, when GIS is done to generate the mailing list, we're actually, we're a little bit generous and we expand greater than...
So, you would err in...
We err on the side of more than less. Correct, yeah. So, I, I'm certain that within 200 feet of Delta that they'd be okay.
You could check that out, you could check the list.
We can certainly, we could certainly check that out. Also, the, these are, the public hearing notices are advertised in the Arundicote Post, they're available on the website, and so there are other avenues for which people might be aware of the fact that there's a public hearing. Also, public hearing signs were posted in the property as well.
All right.
Okay, thank you, though.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, step up?
I have a couple of questions. My name is Marilyn Coleman, and I live at 52 Madison Terrace. Many of you probably remember Ernie Comey's fixture of the neighborhood. If Carolyn is allowed to buy that lot, that gives her some space, and that means that there's no way that you can build two houses there, am I correct?
If she buys that property...
If she buys the lot...
But then...
Are you telling me that then there would only be room for one house?
Well...
I'm asking that as a question.
Okay, here's my answer. If she buys the lot...
Yeah.
And then she comes and asks to build a house on that lot, we have to consider that.
Yeah, right.
So, but once she owns that lot, it's hers to do what she wants with it.
Right.
And with reason, but...
And that means then that the gentleman can only build one house.
Right, he'd build a house on the remaining lot.
That's my first question. Because I would actually help her buy that lot, so she has an off-street parking, so there are not two houses there, which by looking at the diagram that's there, it says a single-family house. That would be wonderful to have a single family living in that house and not rental property for fraternity brothers to come down and rent the house for the summer. We have put up with drug houses, prostitution houses. There is, every time a house goes up for sale, we all pray that it's not going to be bought by someone who's going to rent it back to those kind of people. We've all worked really hard to get those people out of our neighborhood. And our concern is when I see all those bedrooms and all those bathrooms and two houses, and it becomes rental property, we have no control now because whoever wants to rent those for the summer is going to make the rest of our lives miserable on the beach, leaving their junk around, partying, and it will be, you know, fraternity brothers will be party people, and we have no control whether or not there'll even be more drug people or prostitutes. Now they've got a beautiful place, they have a prostitution house. So, you can understand where our concerns are coming from, and we're thankful that they're going to be torn down. But if we'll have to chip in, help her buy the lot, and you can only build one house, then it's only a fewer people that can party and park their ton cars there.
Well, and I understand, you know, looking at the design and the style of the house, houses, they're going to be probably pricey, so I would, you know, I can't imagine that just...
Do you know how many ton college kids could get together to rent that house? And with that parking lot and with that beach? We've got people who live on our street, when their families come to visit, our street has just got their families coming down on a Sunday, take up our whole road.
Right.
With their family, and they're not down there leaving their beer bottles and partying and making our life miserable. So, we'll hope that she gets a lot, and then maybe he can redesign this house a little bigger, a little nicer for a family.
Okay.
And that rental, so that's my only comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Hello?
I just have more of a statement to make here. I've lived in this neighborhood for almost 50 years.
I'm sorry, ma'am, for the record, can I have your name and address?
Yes, it's Deborah Curtis, and I'm at 453 Rock Beach Road.
Thank you.
We have a very special character to our neighborhood, White City. It always has. We had an association that was deeded the property along the right-of-way to the top of the bank. The thing that bothers me is I met this gentleman right after he bought, he bought the property, and I really felt he showed very little regard for the character of our neighborhood or our village, as I like to say. He mentioned wanting to get rid of the right-of-way, and I said, "That can't happen." So, right away, there was this negative attitude about something that's been down there forever, that people can walk that area. He mentioned tearing apart the stuff, all the grass and stuff down on the banks. Now, again, just like Ned said, this is going to hit the DEC because this is a watershed, and a lot of this is governed by the Supreme Court in New York State.
This is a lie, ma'am.
I'm just, no, you had your say. I talked to him, and this is what he said. And I was very concerned about this. I mean, again, we'd have to fight this, but we've got a watershed area, we've got an area that's, we have a beautiful area in Arundicote, this waterfront, we have to preserve it. Again, he might do a wonderful job, but my initial feeling was a total lack of regard for our neighborhood and the character of our, of our little village, as far as I'm concerned. And that's what I want the town to really be aware of, is that they preserve the character of White City.
Thank you.
Yeah, Robert Dates, 40 Delta Terrace. The thing about the houses being pricey, let's say Mr. Cacianni gets the go-ahead on these plans. He can just sell them to Faceless Developmental Company out of Houston, Texas, and their business is pricey weekend or weekly rentals to anyone going. You think they care about Arundicote, New York or White City? That's, yeah, they're going to be pricey, exactly. And those are not pricey houses for a family or a neighbor. Those are pricey, it's a Holiday Inn. It's two of them with a parking lot. It's what that is. It doesn't fit the character, it's not a family structure. That is a mini Holiday Inn, and you have two of them. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else before I close the public hearing?
Can we really close it? He could come back up, and we've got questions that were asked, and...
Yeah, I don't know if he's still here or if he left.
No, he's there.
He's there? Mr. Cacianni, would you like, would you like to come up and answer some questions?
I'd be glad to answer any questions that the board might have after hearing this all right.
Just from a procedural perspective, it is still appropriate to close the public hearing, and then you can still receive follow-up or have an exchange with the applicant so long as the public's had the opportunity to make their statements. We don't need to keep the public hearing open.
So, we're closing the public hearing.
Okay.
Okay, and we're giving the applicant a chance to touch on some of the questions that were asked.
that were asked about.
I'm sorry, can I end up just with a quick clarification, just for the board's awareness and knowledge? The, this area, although the two parcels in question, or the three technically, are, although they are near a boundary that the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation maintains, it's called a coastal erosion hazard area, although these parcels are nearby, they are not located within the coastal erosion hazard area zone that DEC monitors. The applicant, before making application to the town, anytime anyone's near a DEC regulated area, we always advise them to, to speak with DEC first to determine what, if any, permits might be needed related to the proposal or project that they would be bringing to the town. And in this case, this project or both these projects are actually located outside of that coastal erosion hazard area, so there is no DEC permitting associated with this particular action. And so I just want you to be aware of that, that that, that step was taken prior to application being made to the town.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I would just want to add, I want to clarify on the, if there are any questions or the, the point on the pedestrian and the other easements that are affecting this property and that this approval or other approvals that this board has given in the past could somehow affect those. I just want to clarify for everyone that there's, this board does not have the power to alter, terminate, enforce private easement. So regardless of any approvals that may or may not be granted by this board, it's the duty of the property owner whose property is burdened by an easement to be sure that they are observing the requirements of that easement and it's the duty of the property owners who are benefited by a private easement to enforce their rights under that easement. So the town has, there's no, the town has nothing to do with, with any of those easements and they are not an issue as far as the approvals. And they are noted on some of the maps as well. The areas of the easements are noted on the maps.
Well, the board heard an awful lot of things and I'm sure the board hears, you know, different concerns and, and I guess I just take things a little personally. Now, I didn't come before the board here and explain who I am, what I've done, what experience I've had with waterfront. I developed and built the homes at the Bluffs on Arundicote Bay. Nobody in Monroe County could be more sensitive to pedestrian easements. When I developed the Bluffs.
Sir, talk to us.
I'm sorry.
Direct to the.
Talk, okay. Thank you. So when I developed the Bluffs, I created approximately one mile of pedestrian pathway. I never would have talked to the neighbors in this community and suggested anything about impeding or interfering with anybody's access easement. The houses that are going to be built, decks if they're on the back, will be farther back than what currently exists here today. So certainly there's no encroachment. Never have I indicated to any neighbor that I'd be interested in renting houses. I think this would just be cost prohibitive unless perhaps they know something more about other businesses that would produce the income that would support these houses. I think today, people tend to want to live in a house at least 24 feet wide and that's what I'm requesting, 24 feet wide. People tend to have three bedrooms and a bath and a half or two baths. And I don't think that resembles a hotel. And, you know, I, again, I take things personally because I've tried very hard to step in and do the right thing for the neighborhood. These were not the comments I expected to hear. If the board has any questions on the comments, I'd be happy to answer them. Otherwise, I think the board can determine for themselves what's going on here tonight.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
Being sensitive to the neighbors and, and the overall, and to your wanting to build them, is there a concession that you could make or would make in, in the overall size of these buildings? For instance, cutting it back to 23 foot wide instead of 24 foot wide, that would give us another half a foot on each side or short, shortening the overall length a foot or two. Would you make those concessions?
If necessary. You know, Mr. Chairman, my experience is if I do ask for the 24, chances are we might design something smaller, but we never get it right on. So if one corner's askew a little bit, one way or another, we're still safe with the three-foot sideline. So I'm, I'm very confident in that request and maybe a house won't be designed at 24. It might be impossible to build a house so parallel, but I will take that into consideration. But the point to be learned tonight is that there's going to be houses that are actually going to be built on their own lots, not encroached onto the neighbors' lots. I'll accept that neighbors are encroached onto my lot, I can't change that. It's rampant in the neighborhood. And speaking of the neighborhood, everyone here, I presume mostly, lives in Arundicote and I, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think everybody could rent their house. I have no intention of building rentals here, but, you know, why wash the baby out with, with the bathwater when somebody steps up to do something that, I, I don't expect this to be a money-making operation and I take great exception to comments that have been made like that. This is the last thing I need to be doing.
Okay, let me, let me go back to my.
Yes.
In the event us board members decide to approve something tonight?
Yes, sir.
Would it be acceptable if we cut it back a little bit? To, to, to give the overall footprint and a little bit in, in Mr. Thomas's, you know, concern about him being close and some of the neighbors' concern about him being close, I know it's not a lot, but if we were to do that, they would be, it would give a couple feet all the way around.
I. I, I understand what you're asking for and, and as a builder, I would typically design my house 22 feet just to give myself that kind of movement. The roof, I don't think I have to have that one-foot variance. If I were to back off on that, I think we could look, build a lower pitch roof and remove that variance from the request of the board. But I might mention too that right on Delta Terrace itself, there, I believe it's the second house in, very similar to the design that's what's here. It's two-story, it's got a steep pitch. I would probably be pretty certain it's 24 feet wide and there's many, many other houses, not just on Delta Terrace but in that neighborhood, that as these have been rebuilt, you're seeing that people don't want to live in the home that was once designed as White City, which was simply building walls around the tent. And that's what, you know, has been experienced, that's what I see as in the character of the neighborhood. And I don't believe I'm asking for anything more than what I've seen in other property owners do as they've enhanced their properties. And, you know, I, I, and once again, I'm very sorry for some of what's happened on the past, you know, on, on these two lots that I'm involved with, but I had no involvement with what that happened to be. And other areas in these surrounding neighborhoods, you know, people should realize that if there's problems, there's procedures to, you know, call police or whatever activity's going on in homes. I don't think at a zoning board meeting, I, I'm, I'm sorry the board had to, you know, hear that sort of complaint.
I'm, I'm looking at the two sets of plans for 419 and for 423 and they are showing both the front porches out forward of the front of the house. I noticed in your, in your site plan or the, the map, the one porch and deck is off to the side. You don't show that on 419 in, in the plan. Follow me, you've got the same, they're twins.
Correct, that's a very good point. The, the purpose of the drawings, because custom homes will be built on those sites. The purpose of these drawings is to show roof pitches, widths of houses, those home, that the homes that I'm proposing, as well as the home there, as well as probably any similar home in, in the town of Arundicote is going to have typically 24 feet width. That's what those plans represent. Will they be that exact same house? Absolutely not. Custom homes will be drawn, they'll be presented to the building department, somebody will review what variances have been allowed to make sure the new custom home plans will comply with the variances if the board does grant the variances. And that's how I believe that the new homes would go forward. I might add too that the homes would likely have garages and that's why the drawing indicates the driveway going up to the house.
Well, that brings up a good question.
In the year 2017, I think people would like to be able to put a car in the garage.
Oh, that brings up a good point. Where would you put a garage?
Within those outer bounds.
Right within those boundaries, very easily.
What's that?
Right within those boundaries, Mr. Chairman.
So you would eliminate the back room or the back bedroom?
Correct, those rooms can be repositioned, there's nothing rigid about those rooms. Likely you'll see a plan where maybe a room will be built out over the garage. So the garage will occupy 22 or 24 feet by 22 or 24 feet, which would allow, maybe, maybe they wouldn't even be allowed for, for two cars, but they would have to fit within that footprint that, that you're looking at.
So as a point of clarification, this square would be.
That would be a great indication, yes sir. That would be a great indication of where the garage would be. And then a home, the second floor could be built over that.
Pardon me for a moment. I have to ask the audience, just for the purposes of recording this meeting, it's really, really hard for our camera and our equipment downstairs to pick up the microphones at the dais and for the person speaking if there's a lot of background noise. So I would really thank you for acknowledging that, folks, this is being recorded for the purposes of serving as the official minutes of the meeting and also for the purposes of people viewing at home and later on. So thank you so much for that.
Again, well, I guess I've asked the question twice, so any other questions from the board members? All right.
And I'll just finish by saying, I don't think anything is being asked here that's out of ordinary with other homes that have been rebuilt in this very same neighborhood. Thank you for your.
Thank you. I have one question.
Yes, sir.
Yep, go ahead.
Just on the assumption that this is sold, 29 is sold, will that change or alter the type of house that'll go in 28?
No, I don't, I, I, I see the footprint being identical to what you're seeing or smaller, never larger. And if the young lady that, that buys the lot for the intention of preserving it, you know, would, I think you addressed it earlier, could possibly sell it or maybe one of her children or grandchildren would want to build next door and, and again, they'd have to comply with the zoning variances and the building codes and the fire codes and what, what else might come along. But I do think that was a wonderful thing for that lady to step up and instead of coming to a podium and saying, "I don't want it to happen," to step up and, and say, "I want to buy."
Have you made an agreement with her or?
She presented me with a purchase offer and I didn't want to touch it till we came to this meeting here tonight. And if things go well, I've, you know, I've promised her that she can have the right to buy that lot without me having to build on it.
Okay.
There's no other agenda to doing that other than she stepping up and good for her and it'd be nice if more neighbors would step up when things become available and purchase.
All right, now, that brings up another question that Mr. Evans brought up earlier. In the event that we approve one of them, the one, I think it's 423 now?
Uh huh.
Yep. And left and tabled the other one so that either you make a deal or you don't and then if you didn't, you'd have to come back and see us.
Well, the idea here would be to bring in equipment and remove both houses at the same time. There's neighbors' trees that grow over my properties that the neighbors have come to me and asked, and I've certainly suggested that when these houses are down, now's the time to take down your tree. I have one neighbor that had a quote of $10,000 and I said, "It won't be 25% of that when those two houses are down." And so there, these are the benefits that, you know, maybe not everybody's coming up to the podium and talking about, but they certainly have talked about these desires and wishes with me and hopefully it'll work out for them. But I would choose to take down both houses or, or, or not. I, you know, the, the idea of economics would be to take them both down at the same time. And I have been issued demolition permits to allow that to happen.
Right.
But again, I won't exercise those permits.
Soon before you were planning to start?
As, as soon as we get a favorable response from the zoning board, I think we would begin removing the houses.
Okay.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Okay, now we're going to move on to the last one, right?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Next item on the agenda is case number PZB 1504-4. Upon the matter of request by Land Tech acting as agent for Angelo Lichardello for use variance and area variances to construct 62 townhouse units with less than required side setbacks and exceeding maximum allowable density on premises 160 Denzmore Road in an R1 residential district.
Good evening, I'm Alan Knoff, attorney for the applicant. I'm here with John Sharaba from Land Tech, my associate Melissa Valley and Angelo Lichardello from the project applicant. We were here about a year ago.
Yep, do we need to swear them all in again?
No.
No? Okay, thank you. All right, continue.
Well, we were here about a year ago and presented our case for the variances. Kevin Bruckner, our appraiser was here, presented his analysis, which you also have in writing. He recently, we submitted a supplement to that. So I guess what we would like to do tonight is maybe briefly review what our presentation was because as you know, we had to wait for the seeker process to be completed, which finally was concluded with a negative declaration from the planning board, I guess in, was it in March or February? But fairly recently, they gave a negative declaration, so now the zoning board can go forward. So we'd like to present, we know that it's on for public hearing for the public to speak. We would prefer that the board keep the hearing open so we can respond to any issues that are raised and maybe have a fuller board to consider the application in a month or two.
Before you get started, I want to ask counsel if she would go over some of the things that you need for the, for the.
For the use variance?
Yep.
Sure. Was the use variance what you were going to address first, Alan?
Well, John was gonna, I mean, I can, I can address it first or John was going to briefly just present the, what the project is and then I was going to go through the use variance factors.
Okay. I, I guess before, before John steps up, I can just do a, a general overview so this board has in mind sort of the, the framework within which you're considering this project. It's, it's a little bit different than what the typical applications are that are before the board. Usually, we're used to seeing a lot of variances, you've dealt with use variances in the past, of course, but just, just reminding this board of the standards for use variance, which are a little bit different than the area variance standards and there are some area variances associated with this application as well. But the area variance standards, if you remember, it's more of a balance. If there is no detriment to the health, safety, welfare of the community, there's a shifting in the burden and it's, it's not as heavy of a burden to overcome an area variance as it is a use variance. A use variance, there's. A use variance, there's the underlying question of whether or not denying the variance would create an unnecessary hardship on the applicant. And then there are four specific use variance standards, all of which the applicant needs to meet. The one that receives usually the most focus, and it's what Alan was referring to in the letter from their financial consultant, is whether or not they're, whether or not the applicant can receive a reasonable rate of return on his investment of the property. Those are all, that's the argument that's detailed in the prior letter and the update from the financial consultant. The second is whether the property presents any unique circumstances versus general conditions. So are there things that are special or unique about this property that weigh in favor of granting this special relief for a use variance? The third is that there will be no alteration in the essential character of the area. And the fourth is that the hardship is not self-created. So of those four criteria, with, again, the overarching unnecessary hardship standard, they all have to be proven and met, and the focus is typically on the, whether or not a reasonable rate of return can be realized under any of the permitted uses of the land. And here, it's an R1 district, so the most relevant, the relevant consideration is whether or not the developer could realize a reasonable rate of return on a development of single-family detached houses. So with that in mind, John, or Alan, whichever of you wanted to...
John's going to go ahead, and I think your attorney succinctly stated the overall standard for use variance.
Thank you.
And just for another, for a matter of, from a process standpoint, this board's going to take up the use variance. Even though both are listed, the plan of approach would be to take up the use variance first, and then subsequent site plan review and any other remaining area variances would be taken up at a later date. So right now, the first order of business would be the use variance for this board.
That makes sense.
So John Sharaba with LandTech, and thank you for a brief moment here to kind of go back over the history of what we're looking at. And as Alan said, this is a project we've been working on for quite some time. This is a 12.6 acre parcel on the east side of Densmore Road. To the north of us is Kennedy Circle. To the east of us is 590, and to the south of us is Densmore Creek. So it's kind of a tucked away parcel here. And due to the secret process, we had to go heavily into engineering to answer a lot of their questions. But we have an eight-unit townhome building consisting of, excuse me, an eight-building townhome unit consisting of 62 units.
John, I'm not sure that's on.
Sure. Is it on?
Let's try this.
Another one?
That one's now it's...
Is it better?
Yeah.
All right, maybe a little closer to my mouth then. So again, eight buildings consisting total of 62 townhome units for sale. And what we're using in the engineering term is a cluster philosophy. Instead of R1, where we put a normal road, we kind of looked at the density analysis of 62 and then figured out how to maximize the parcel to achieve a better effect. And in this case, a better effect is buffering. So what we're able to accomplish is we're going to have a 30-foot permanent easement. Still not working? How about this? Better?
Yep.
30-foot conservation easement along the back property line of Kennedy Circle on our property so that the existing vegetation can stay. That would continue from the right of way of Densmore Road just past our last unit. At that point, it would switch to a 15-foot buffer because this area is undeveloped. The project itself has sanitary sewer that'll be incorporated into Densmore Road, also public water. The biggest issue with this project has been stormwater and the effects of stormwater on the environment and how to control that. So the stormwater system collects all the water here. It goes into a siltation basin and then into a detention pond. This is not a wet pond. This is a grassy depression. At the only time water will be in there would be a large stormwater event, a large 100-year storm. And that point, the water would fill in here from our site, go to a weir, and then pipe down the slope to Densmore Creek. That analysis is part of our one-year lack of being here. A lot of geotextile engineering has gone through to that. LaBella's reviewed that, and that the secret process was able to move forward, and now we're here tonight. I'd also like to point out that these buildings are 60 feet from the south property line. The rear setback is only 40 feet in R1. So we've got a lot more distance. We're having a 30-foot buffer, a 30-foot green space than a building. If this was to remain R1, rear setback for R1 houses is only 40 feet. So as you can imagine, if we were doing an R1 development, conventional, single-family houses, there would be no buffering here. It'd be fences to fences, pools to pools, shed to shed, be very open. So that's the benefit of the cluster philosophy. And other than that, as I said before, the secret process is, we've put a lot of engineering into it that we normally don't do. I believe the planning board has reviewed it, and they're satisfied. We still have to address comments from the town engineer and other agencies, but this is the logical first step. So if we were fortunate to get approved for variances, we would readily move through the planning board and address any concerns they have. And that's really all I have as far as overview of where we've been.
And I'll just briefly go through the four factors that we need to meet for the use variance. And again, the first, most important is no reasonable return on the investment. And the analysis that Mr. Bruckner did shows that it just is not economically feasible to do a R1 development here. The basic problem is it will cost more to build the development in the houses than you could sell a house for. He went through an analysis of what single-family houses, even newer houses, what they would sell for. I mean, here are the detached homes. The approximate cost to build would be about $208,000. For the, what we've proposed, the townhouse-type building, more like $133,000. But the, to get a reasonable return, the single-family houses would have to sell, even at a 12% rate of return would be $233,000. At a 20% rate of return, which is more market, it would be more like $250,000. And that is way above what a single-family house would sell for. The lower, by having more units, also the common walls, we can spread the development costs for the roads, sewers, et cetera, over more units and bring down the cost per unit. And as set forth in the analysis, it does make it economically feasible with a reasonable rate of return in the neighborhood of about, I think about 23%, 24%. So, but it just comes down to, with the selling prices of single-family homes, it needs to run a quiet. You just can't do a new suburban development at this point in time. As far as unique circumstances, this property is unique. It is located on Densmore Creek, where there are EPods we have to deal with. It's really sort of a very mixed area. There's single-family residential to the north, but across the street is a school, and then to the other side of the creek are apartments. So there's really a mix of uses in this area. The third factor is whether it's self-created. This has not been self-created. Mr. Bettinger had been trying to do something with his property since 1951, and I know there were talk about whether it be a town park or sold or whatever over the years. But we did, our client was in discussions or contract to possibly purchase from Mr. Bettinger. We did get an interpretation from the town that duplexes were allowed, which would have allowed 76 units on the property according to the site capacity worksheet. So in reliance on that, our client purchased the property. The town then amended the law to remove the ability to develop duplexes. So between the difficulty Mr. Bettinger had over the years doing anything with the property and the fact that the law was changed after our client purchased, it was not a self-created hardship. And the last is change in character of the neighborhood. We don't think there'd be any real change here. There's going to be a 30-foot buffer. This is going to be a nice development. The, basically luxury apartments, high-end use. It's across the street from the school and all, and there's already apartments in the neighborhood. These will be an attractive development. Our client has built in Webster and other towns around here, very nice developments. There's a need for these in a run of quiet. And in fact, the comprehensive plan talks about the need for some higher-density development and more of a diversity of housing. So we believe we've shown the necessity for a use variance so that something can be done with this property, which really is, under the present zoning, really is not feasible.
Great question.
Yes.
When you talked about single houses, that would be an individual purchasing a house?
Yes.
And that would be way, way too expensive to do what could be built there.
Correct.
So we're talking about, is it apartments or townhouses or what exactly? How do you categorize these dwellings?
Well, they'd be townhouses. They could either be owned or occupied or could be rented out. I mean, it'd be either one. As I think earlier, any single-family house, whether attached or detached, could either be owned or occupied. We'd have to, if we did that, we would have to have separate lots to sell off as separate townhouse units. Or it could stay as one big lot, and then it could be leased out as apartments.
Is one more economically feasible than the other?
I'm not sure the, I think the financing may be a little simpler for the apartments. If you did apartments, I think it's easier to get financing right now. Ultimately, I mean, I guess I'd have to go back to our appraiser and ask that question. I mean, in theory, it should be six of one, half dozen of the other. But I guess I can go back to Mr. Bruckner and try to have that answer for you at the next meeting.
Your hardship analysis, it's currently based on...
On sale.
On sale, right.
Right.
So what they have in the application right now, not to say that they would have to be owner-occupied, but the analysis is...
Correct.
Single-family detached versus these attached row house or townhouses that would be individually owned.
Right.
So I think that that's a good question, Russ, is what the numbers would look like.
If they were rentals.
Right.
Or the issue isn't so much rentals, but, right. It's, and the issue, again, for this board to consider, isn't owner-occupied versus rental, because that's, that's not our issue. Our issue is what the developer would need to do on the lot in order to realize the rate of return that's deemed reasonable. So, but it's fair to have the full analysis of both what they could be receiving as a rate of return for owner-owned lots versus rental, because maybe it's a much larger rate of return if they are rented and their break point is lower. Maybe it only takes 50 units to realize the same rate of return if you're renting versus if you're buying. So that's...
Yeah, I mean, in theory, from what I remember from economics, it should be baked into the price, but I can't tell you that's correct.
Right.
So I think I really would have to go back to Kevin and ask him that question, you know.
And I just want to follow up and clarify for the board as well on the code change. It was never the town's intention that single-family attached dwellings, which is what these row houses or townhouses were, were to be permitted in an R1 district. A R1 district, the intent was always, as it is now, single-family detached, what people think of as a single-family home. What Alan is referring to is, from his good lawyering, he identified several loopholes and glitches in the wording of the code. So he's accurate that there, it was technically, legally permitted when the project first was introduced to have duplexes in the R1 district. That had never been raised or pursued by another applicant, so you don't have duplexes or triples or other row or townhouses in any R1, two, or three districts that used the old definitions to get there. But Alan was accurate in his analysis, so we made some cleanup changes to the code to make sure that the intent was reflected by the language.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Now, is it my understanding that we're not going to discuss tonight the actual setbacks and the...
Correct. That would be something that would be better served after a site plan review had been conducted for a project, because the potential requirements and need of variances might be altered based on the result of variances. So typically, as in other cases, the site plan approval comes first, and then the zoning board is presented with that approved site plan and asked to grant any relief that might be needed for setbacks. And certainly, from there, we can go back and forth between boards, but the first board to contemplate the physical layout should be the, should be the planning board. And the planning board has only looked at this project for the purposes of the seeker review, because this board, the zoning board, referred it to them and asked them to serve as lead agent in a coordinated review for the purposes of seeker. So while the planning board's seen, the proposal is just to make a determination of significance.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just add, then, I mean, we don't have, you know, objection to putting off the setback and all that kind of analysis, but we did envision that the density issue was part of what is before the board, both kind of the use and the density, because it kind of goes hand in hand, really.
Well...
I think, yeah, I think that they would hold off. I think that if the use variance were to be granted, we can move forward, and then throughout, your density may get whittled down through site plan...
Well, yeah, I understand that.
But, right, I think the density variance, they would wait on that as well, right? All the area variances, you would want to wait on.
Do you mean that you would wait on the number?
I think, I think so, right?
I would think that might be the, because it's part of the overall site performance, and that's something that the planning board would be addressing.
Well, I also have, you know, in reference to the use variance and all the numbers that are in this packet, and looking at it, again, I don't know that, I have, personally, I have deciphered the numbers enough that I could say that it met the requirement. And I don't know if the other board members feel the same way, or if they feel that the dollars and cents have, make sense. I don't know if there's any other questions on that, but...
Since I think I started, the issue of costs, I'm not comfortable that I understand the impact also. So I need to do a little more analysis of the price points.
Right.
Because I think the price points to make a profit still seems high, especially when comparing, well, properties being sold.
Yeah, I agree. You know, I know it's, I know you've been working at this and working at it, but I think that we need to decipher the dollars and sense of it all better.
No pun intended.
Well, you know, it's, it, there are numbers, but the numbers can look...
Well, I mean, we'd be happy to bring back Mr. Bruckner, who would do a better job than I would to...
Well, and I...
Explain some of the...
I think, if I'm reading this right, and page number three in your document from May of 2016, I believe this is the same numbers you want to use, this is the same numbers you were just quoting.
Yeah.
I don't think spells out it enough to determine that it is a financial hardship in building single-family homes versus the row homes. I mean, there's no doubt that the row homes are going to be lucrative, but our job as the board is, and I've heard Mr. Chairman Hinman say this, is to determine the least amount of variance that we need to allow in order to make it acceptable.
Well, do you want me to walk through some?
Well...
I can, I can go through some of the...
I mean, you can. I mean, you can, unless you would prefer Mr. Buckner.
I'd rather bring back Mr. Buckner next month or the month after to.
You know.
I mean, but the basic, the basic idea is the 208, you can't, you know, with, you're not even going to get 208 for a house, let alone have any, and that's only breaking even.
And that's on, and that's on how many square foot of a house?
1,500.
1,500 square foot of a house in 208 is your overall. And again, it's a Mr. Evans' idea, that seems like a lot of money for a 1,500 square foot house, but it.
Do you want to address the building costs here?
Because, because the building costs can be adjusted by different materials. And you can have.
You can have granite counters, or you can have, you know, vermicke counters. So again, all of it is subject to.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I mean, the biggest cost is the infrastructure that we're spreading out over however many units. So the, you know, the last page shows the infrastructure costs, basically the same, 675 for the row or townhouses. This is, attached, this is the Land Tech letter attached to the end of the Buckner appraisal. It's 675 to do the, is the estimate on development of the infrastructure for the townhouses, and 699 for the detached houses. So, pretty similar. I mean, the basic issue is, is really the density that you.
Where are you reading here? Okay, you're, the overall cost of the project, 675 versus 699.
Yeah, that's the last page. It's a December 1, 2014 letter from Land Tech.
I got it.
So that's the roads, the sewers, you know, all that kind of stuff.
Right.
So, I mean, the basic issue is if I divide that number by 31, then it's going to be about 21,000 per unit. But if I divide it by 62, it's going to be about 10,000 and change per unit. So that's a, you know, that's a big difference there. And then the other difference is going to be just the less expensive building cost for, we compared the 1,300 square foot townhouse or duplex to the.
How many single-family homes were you estimating in that, at the $20,000 mark?
Thirty-one.
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 Yeah.
All right. Because your initial, your initial letter here was 74 and then 35 homes, separate homes.
Yeah, I think initially we were in the 70s. That was the, what the site capacity workshop, excuse me, worksheet allowed. And we cut back from what's allowed under the site capacity worksheet. So when we first, he purchased the property and duplexes were allowed, the site capacity worksheet, I think, allowed about 70, 76 or so units.
I think that, that begs the argument, that the original intent of your purchase and the loophole doesn't exist. So can we stop referring to that? Let's talk about what exists now.
Okay.
So what exists now is the maximum amount allowed of single house, homes 35. And you're, you want to build 62. Is that, is that correct?
Right, right, right. Really, I thought we could only fit, I think when they did the layout, they really only fit 31, because you do the site capacity worksheet, but then, I mean, you got to physically make it fit on the lot. And I think when they actually, when John laid it out with where the roads would go and all that, they only really could fit 31, single-family homes, or if they were dup, you know, if we were allowed to do duplexes, say, it would be 62, if, if each one was on a separate lot, so.
I, I think, and gentlemen, correct me if I'm wrong, in order to, to more fully understand and, and digest the, the financial analysis, I think one component that would be good for Kevin to follow up on is, is Russ's point, is a comparison of if these are actually going to be rented units, does that change the numbers? And I don't, let me, let me clarify, not rented, if they're, if it's going to be, they're going to be all on one lot, right? Because just because they're on separate lots doesn't mean they can't be rented. So if they're going to be all on one lot, how does that change the numbers? And then I think the other component, and we can add in if there are others, but I think the other important one for, maybe you could go back on with Kevin, is I, I think that you do a, a nice job in the addendum to the letter of describing the development costs, the sanitary sewer, and the storm sewer, and the stormwater management. And we can see how those divided among the single-family detached homes is about $20,000 per home. So you have to divide that, and each home has to carry about $20,000 of that burden versus not, versus, you know, between nine and 10, if they were the attached row houses. I think where there is still a lot of detail missing is though in that additional $187,000 building cost for the single-family detached, right? And that, and that goes to some of the points that the board members have made, is where are you coming up with that $187,000 building cost? Because depending on the size of the homes, the building materials, and other factors, there may be a way to build cheaper homes to still have that $20,000, you know, per unit development cost baked in, and, and still make money where there's a market in Arundic quite to buy.
All right. I mean, we can address that. I mean, basically, we're saying we can build the row houses at a little over $90 a foot, and the, right, I'm doing my math right? And the detached houses are more like, looks like about 120, 125 a foot or something like that.
Sure, but we understand that detached houses run a wide gamut, right? There are houses that sell for $120,000, and there are houses that sell for $300,000. So maybe showing this board a little bit more.
Yeah, we can do that. I, I'm not sure we can go much deeper than that and meet code and all that, but I understand the question. So what we could do is go back and, and see what mater, you know, what materials we're talking about, and, you know, if there's a way to do.
Right.
More of a, more of a bare bones, you know, house. Of course, whether, you know, and whether that sells for the same price, or sells for a lesser price too, you know? But, but certainly we could go back and try to give you some more detail on that.
And maybe not even necessarily bare bones. I think it's, it's difficult maybe for people to understand, the development costs aside, that there are no decent houses that can be constructed for less than $187,000. So even if you didn't have the $20,000 per unit development cost, maybe showing this board how you can.
Okay.
Build maybe a little bit of a, a lower cost house.
Well, just in your, in your, in that analysis there from Land Tech, you know, I know those are all estimates, and they're all.
Right.
But just looking at the, the property costs as 200,000, and it was actually 150.
Oh, there's an adjustment. When that letter was done in 2014, we thought the price was going to be 200,000. It was negotiated to 150. So if you look on page three of Mr. Buckner's letter, he, he makes an adjustment. He backs off the 200 and adds in 150. It's a little bit confusing. But he did adjust for the fact that the actual price was only 150. So we basically lopped 50 grand off, because Angelo, I guess, negotiated a better deal with the seller.
You know, again, to keep it, to keep it correct, I think it needs to be, this, this one needs to be revised to where.
Okay.
Updated letter.
We can do that.
You know.
You know, and we could also look at what's happened. I mean, we submitted our application a year ago, so I could ask Kevin to look at, you know, has anything changed in the market in the last year? I don't think it has, but I don't know that, so.
Yeah, and I guess my problem, Mr. Chairman, is that what this assumes is that no new house can be built for $187,000.
That's what they're going to address.
I just don't, I just don't buy that premise.
I, I have a tendency to agree with it. Again, that's, that's going to be the stipulation. And the use variance is harder to, harder to justify. In our eyes, it's, it's a, it's a higher bar.
Right.
And, and so.
Right. No, I mean, right, it is. So we, we can go back and try to get some.
The whole idea is, if, you know, he has to show that he's taking a hardship. And the idea is, can he sell that lot again and get his money back? Or, or is he going to lose some money selling the lot if he doesn't develop? But, you know, obviously, he's got other costs at this point.
Right.
So there is going to be hardship if he just cashes out. But it's, it's gotta, it's gotta be justified, and so we can see it.
Right.
In clear eyes.
Again, Mr. Chairman, I commend projects like this. I think our town needs, you know, good development. So this is not a blanket, no, it's just, I don't think the justification.
And I am familiar with some of the gentleman's projects, and they are nice ones. You know, there's no doubt he builds.
He's a great, he's a good builder.
He's a good builder.
So I just don't think what I see here justifies changing the character of the neighborhood in a way that, that I can vote for.
All right.
We're not voting right now, so I think we can.
Yeah, so I think, I guess I'd ask if we get, maybe even two months, to have Kevin go back and come up with some new, more detailed analysis and get it to the board in far enough advance that you could review it and all.
I would appreciate that also.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll table it, right?
I think we're, we're published tonight for the public hearing, so we should accept public time.
All right, so we're going to take some comment, and then.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Alan.
So, is there, at this point, anybody here that would like to speak in favor of this application? Step right up. And is there anybody that would like to speak against? Is that in favor or against? Against? Okay, come on, step up. Make a line, please, and state your name.
My name is Brendan Callahan Stiles. My residence is 252 Culver Parkway. I am a student at East Arundic quite Middle School in, at the eighth grade. And I do not feel that adding additional units to the 62 would provide protective safety for the students. The fact that right across the street, there is the school. And that when you do increase the amount of population, the amount of cars, that you are going to put more students at risk for accidents. We have many walkers, bikers. And if we're doing the math, there are 62 units, right? Or possibly 62 units. And I'm just going to use my calculator at last. Let's say every, this is our family units. Every family has a car. Half the families have two cars. My families have, my family has two cars. We're a two-car family. So 62 divided by two, 31. 62 plus 31, 93. 93 extra cars in the area where we have many students walking, biking, going to and from activities over at the other school on the other side of Norton Street, Laurelton Party. And that is a younger age school. And we have sports that have to walk over there. I play soccer. I have to walk over to LP Field. We have field hockey. We have lacrosse. They all walk over. This is additional traffic. We have crossing guards on Norton and Densmore. And the traffic is very heavy in the mornings and in the afternoons as students are coming in and out of school. I feel like added traffic would not be helpful. What if there is a fire drill or an emergency, and a emergency vehicle needs to get through? How is this traffic going to result in that? There could be an EMS need. We have had ambulants have to come. Traffic could get in the way of that. And then comes the problems of distractions to the students during school. There is going to need to be a construction need, because these homes are going to have to need to be built. Let's say they do it hastily two years. Two years of construction going across from a school where students are trying to learn. I have classrooms that face the east side where these homes would be built. And classrooms are a place for learning, and we do not need the extra distractions of this construction. Then, once the homes are built, there will be people moving in. There will be daily deliveries, garbage pickups, mail trucks. Let's say there's a home disturbance, such as a robbery, or a police call for domestic violence. How is that going to affect the students? Because I know that as soon as any emergency vehicle goes by our school, we instantly wonder what happened. And that is the talk of the school for the day, and I do not feel that these homes would help the students in their learning. That is all I have to say.
Thank you.
My name is Sam Mastrosimone. I live at 298 Wall Road. So I've been in a house I built myself for 54 years. So I never heard it so beautiful, everything else. I built it somehow. It was a master contract. I built it somehow. Colors let me dry. The colors is of the builder. Wall road, half the wall road, because the other half is an old one. The new one in the east side near the school. So I imagine that depression from the house. How much they're gonna lose in the tax, everything else, going to sell the house, everything. So this gentleman, they're talking about building 62 units of single house. I go for the single house. In one way, I think about the traffic gonna be, like the younger man said before over here, the traffic they're gonna be for Densmore, across the street to the school, by 1030, 231, the bus, leave everything else. It's a very, very better situation. So I'm glad you hear me, everything else. I say no, no for the 62 units. I go for the single house. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is James Callahan Stiles. I reside at 252 Culver Parkway. And my concern is also the density of it and the safety of the students. As the young man said earlier, there's the, the middle school directly across. What hadn't been addressed is the Laurelton Party Elementary School, which is just around the corner. Also, the, this apartment complex isn't, doesn't exit into a major thoroughfare. It exits right out onto Densmore. The three roads that do take you out to Culver Road are heavily owner occupied. And, sorry, I'm feeling emotional about the situation right now. And then all the, as I was trying to say, the excess traffic from Densmore out to Norton, so that vehicles can either get to Culver Road in one direction, or to 590 in the other direction. It's not the, it's, it's not the property being developed, it's the density of the, of the, of the proposed development that I have issue with. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Sherry Evershaw, and I reside at 95 Kennedy Circle. The R1 law change that the developers team has spoken about was not a change. It was a clarification of our R1 code. The intent of the law was not changed. On March 19, 2015, the town board voted unanimously to accept clarification of the R1 code for the purpose, and I quote, "to affirm longstanding, understanding, and documented interpretations of uses permitted in R1, R2, and R3 residential districts." Additionally, the town board noted these clarifications were made, and I quote, "to limit potential for misinterpretation or misapplication of regulations and protect residential neighborhoods." I'd also like to mention, too, that Mr. Bettinger could have sold this property to the school district many years ago. They had an offer in for much more money, fair market value, that he ended up selling it to this developer for. And at past meetings, Mr. Knopf has said that they are leaning towards senior tenants. And if this developer and Mr. Knopf really are leaning towards that, they would be trying to rezone this property to R7. It sounds nice to say at a meeting with no legality to back up what you're saying. When it comes down to renting, they cannot discriminate, and these apartments will be rented by anyone if it isn't zoned R7. Who in the town would be monitoring that anyway? There is no legal issue to rent only to seniors. It's just a bunch of words that are saying to make the whole rental issue more palatable, but it isn't the truth. It's a smokescreen, and the same thing this developer said about his apartment development in Webster, which is not senior, by the way. It is not the town of Arundic quite or my neighborhood's fault that this developer decided to buy 160 Densmore non-contingent. Who does that? I don't know anyone who buys property without getting the approvals needed before they buy it outright. Now it's the town's responsibility to make sure that he gets a reasonable rate of return? Really? Who makes sure that I'm going to get a reasonable rate of return when I sell my house, especially if these apartments are built in my neighborhood? How many people update their kitchen or bathroom, put a pool in, and never profit from those updates? Plenty of people. Nobody goes around making sure that average Joe people get a reasonable rate of return. The only person that seems to matter in all of this is the developer. Not hundreds of houses and a school that surrounds this R1 parcel. Additionally, how can this developer still use the claim that he can't get a return with single-family homes, when another piece of Mr. Bettinger's property on Party Road that recently sold is exactly doing that? New single-family homes right now are being built on Party Road, a stone's throw away from Densmore Road. I have a. I have a printout of the houses if you would like to see. They are right across the street from a school, Laurelton, just like Densmore is across the street from East Arundic quite Middle School. The new subdivision on Party has four to five lots on land that was purchased for thirty thousand dollars. I have that deed, which amounts to six thousand to seventy-five hundred dollars per lot. The applicant is claiming that single-family homes will not allow a return on the hundred and fifty thousand dollars he paid for one sixty Densmore, land that will support thirty-one houses under the R-one code. This amounts to under five thousand dollars per single-family lot. This element alone is enough to deny this application. R-one is single-family homes. Thirty-one single-family homes fit on this parcel. Not only is this developer asking for double density, he's asking for apartment buildings instead of single-family homes. Most people who bought houses in our area made sure that one sixty Densmore was zoned R-one, knowing that only single-family homes could be built. The applicant chose to purchase the land before obtaining any variances. That is very rare and completely his choice. This whole situat, situation is clearly self-created, and the application could also be denied on this factor. If this development is allowed to be built, it sets a new precedent in our town of what R-one allows. It opens a Pandora's Box in our whole town, not only my neighborhood. The character of our neighborhood will be changed, and our home values will plummet. Our school district will have additional strain, as will our infrastructure. Anywhere in town, it will not matter if you are in an R-one single-family neighborhood, because that will no longer mean anything. The town does not need any more apartment complexes. The school district does not need any more apartment complexes, and a fair return can be made under the legal R-one code. Please deny this application for a use variance and uphold what R-one zoning means in our town. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Well, good evening. Again, I'm Christopher Burns at ninety Kinney Drive, and I'm also here to ask this board to deny the variances that have been requested as they've been presented. As a couple of reactions to what I've heard, when did it become the town's responsibility to ensure a particular return on investment to developers? It would have seemed that we learned our lesson from the black hole that we know as the Medley Center, that developers will do what developers do, and it's the town's obligation to provide a safe, comfortable neighborhood for residents, not ensure return on investment. As the young man said earlier, safety is a real concern. As a community, as a town, we are still grappling with the horrible accident that happened just last week on Cooper Road, where a student was struck by a vehicle. I'm horrified to hear that we're talking about a project that is of higher than normal density right in front of a school. That scares me. We have to worry about our students and not introduce more traffic, but introduce more safety and more concern for our students. The other issue is, with this density and with these row homes, we're talking about neighbors and neighborhoods that live in freestanding, single-family homes with a yard and a property. I don't think anyone can stand here and say this isn't going to change the character of the neighborhood. It's definitely gonna change the character of the neighborhood. And, you know, yes, there are mitigating factors, and we're trying to integrate environmental features, but the character of the neighborhood is going to change, and it's definitely going to have a negative effect on property values and quality of the environment for the adjacent property owners that are going from a wooded, natural area to now a very densely populated, populated area. I don't think it's the right choice for our town. I don't think it's the right choice for that neighborhood. Again, I'm asking this board to deny the variances as they've been presented tonight, and it sounds like for some time. There's a lot more that can be done here in terms of making this parcel and this property look much more like the surrounding neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you.
Michelle Decheck, one oh five Kennedy Circle. Thank you for the opportunity to address the board tonight. We've talked a lot about money. We've talked a lot about failure. We've talked a lot about profit or lack thereof, so I'm not gonna go into that. I feel that's been adequately covered. It's not homeowner's job to take the burden for property purchase and whether that was a good or a poor investment. But what I really want to talk to you today about is my neighborhood, because you guys don't live in my neighborhood. You don't walk your dog on your, on the side streets every single day and meet the neighbors. You don't see the amount of traffic that's there. You don't see all the single-family homes and all the families that I do on a daily basis, because that's my neighborhood. Okay? With this variances, with these variances that are being proposed, I have significant concerns about the quality of my life and the quality of my neighborhood and the characteristics that are gonna change. I'm concerned about the traffic. I'm, there is quite a lot of traffic right now. If we're going to add sixty-two, you know, more units with all of the traffic and all the cars that come with that, I'm worried. Right now, I've seen people fly down Densmore, fly down Herbally as a cut through around Norton Street and Culver Road. We're gonna increase the number, there's gonna be more risk for injury. There's a danger to me as a citizen to be walking on those sidewalks, and there aren't even sidewalks all the way up and down some of those streets. So the safety factor is huge for me. That's not even considering all those students that are in school. And I have seen many students walk. I've seen many close calls. I'm very concerned about that. I'm concerned about the crowding in the school district. Okay? That school district is struggling to be able to accommodate all the students that we have. And if we increase that burden, where is that gonna leave us in terms of quality of education and the students that we are producing out as citizens? I have a lot of concerns about that. I'm concerned about the roads even. Some of those roads, if you, have you been up and down those roads? They are full of potholders. They are in rough shape. We're gonna add burden to that infrastructure? What is that gonna leave us? We're removing the character of that neighborhood. We are going from single-family homes to apartments or row houses or whatever label you wanna put on that. That completely changes the characteristic of the neighborhood. I don't want a parking lot in my neighborhood. I chose to live here against many people's suggestions because I like the neighborhood. I don't want parking lots. I don't want cesspools behind my house. I don't want a buffer between these large buildings that are completely different than what a single-family home looks like. That is not what R-one is. That is not what I purchased when I bought my home, knowing that that parcel next to me is R-one, knowing that what is allowed on there. So I have a lot of concerns about the quality of life. I have concerns about how the project's gonna play out. And, you know, that needs to be considered, because the quality and the characteristic of this neighborhood is utmost important for all of us who live here. And, you know, like I said, we've talked about reasonable return. We've talked about self-created burden. You know, this isn't a unique neighborhood. I mean, it's an R-one. There's nothing unique about that. So I really urge you to strongly consider this application, strongly consider how this is going to change the characteristic of the neighborhood. Thank you for your time for letting me speak.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Joey Evershed, and I reside at ninety-five Kennedy Circle. I'm currently an MBA student at Saint John Fisher College, and I have my bachelor's degree in finance from SUNY Brockport. I bring this point up to you because I have heard arguments and statements from Mr. La Caradello and his attorney that seem highly questionable in regards to the way they have determined rates of return and business practices in general. As of twenty fifteen, the average profit margin on single-family home construction in the, in the U.S. was nine percent. That's after taxes, after everything. That's what you walk away with as the developer, nine percent. That's from the National Association of Home Builders. And it's not twenty percent like it's been claimed. I, I don't know where they're getting that figure from. The developer claims that going forward with the single-family home construction would not generate a profit, but rather a loss. I wouldn't mind personally checking over their projected finances on single-family homes, because I'm sure there's profit potential, if they have really fully explored single-family home construction. My guess is that their estimates are so skewed and biased to a degree that they have used outrageous figures. If there is not profit potential with legitimate estimates, other people are making money on single-family home construction. Others are. It's not our fault if there's inefficiencies or if there's ineffectiveness with their business. It's not our fault if they're making poor business choices, like buying property outright and not contingently, which they did. The opposition will argue that homes in Arundic quite, single-family homes, sell for less in general than the U.S. average. That is true, and I'm sure they have factored that into their decision. They should also factor mineral county labor, material, overhead costs, et cetera. At a previous meeting, they were not even using your state statistics for labor costs and materials costs. They were, I can't remember the state or what they were using, but I just remember it wasn't even New York State. This sadly too often affects a business in greed. Pick and choose not the best and most accurate data, statistics and facts, when presenting and arguing a case. Choose the data that makes your numbers look the way you want your numbers to look. For example, a huge markup in expenses they associate with their marble and tile costs. The developer owns a company called Custom Marble and Granite Inc. He owns this company. Are they using cost pricing, or are they using markup pricing like they would if they were going into the market and buying these materials? That's important questions to ask, and I don't even know if that's factored into this, into their projections, because I'm sure he can get them at cost owning the company. What Mr. La Caradello and his attorney have offered and presented is a complete masquerade. Why should we take the advice from the developer's attorney? He will obviously say whatever is in the best interest of his client. Same thing with anybody on their payroll. They're gonna say what their client wants them to say. They're gonna present facts the way that puts their client in a better position. That's how business works. The finances, data, rates of return must be looked into by an unbiased party with financial expertise. If Mr. Knopf wishes to come up and explain and discuss the points I have made, like at the previous meeting, I would also request that I'd be allowed to give additional input, because I am sure he will continue to camouflage the truth, just present it and articulate it in a different way. But please understand it is all the same. Thank you for your time and for your service.
Thank you.
I'm Madeline Guera. I live at one seven one Kennedy Circle. I agree with everything that has been said tonight. One point that hasn't been addressed was the creek. The water flow from behind that would go beyond ends up in my backyard. I never had water there before. Now I do. They put up, you have to understand, there's a lot of fill-ins on our side of the, the street. And what happens is, some of them had been putting these great big drain, what would you call them? Drain things where the water goes through. When they filled in, I get more water. Now that water that I get, I never had it before, accumulates by the expressway, okay? The expressway backs up to my property. That's supposed to go underneath the highway, the expressway, and dump into the bay or whatever, okay? It's not doing that. It backs up all the time. I'm getting water. That means mosquitoes. That means other bugs. I have wooded area there. Part of my, before I bought it, they had to fill inland because my house is so big, they had to fill in the property so that I would have some yard space. Now what's happening, that's eroding because of the water. Now I have planted myrtle there to hold back the bank. I put a couple of trees there, evergreens, to kind of hold it back. I don't need any more water from the creek. The people who bought that land or going to buy it, I don't know what state they're in now, they knew it was R-one. And they knew private homes were supposed to be in there. Everything comes down to the dollar. It's just too bad. He had the opportunity to buy, to sell it to the school for more money than it is selling for now. So don't tell me about hardship. Why didn't he sell it to the school? If he did, the school would be there, and across the street where the school is, there'd be private homes. All of a sudden, it's a burden. What about me? I'm retired. I'm eighty-six years old. My life savings are in that home. Do you know how many signs wanna go up because they're scared of what you're going to do? They're afraid you're gonna approve this. And they're trying to say, what am I gonna do? I wanna get it before they build anything, before they do anything. I'll lose the value of my home. You know, I've just about had it. And do the right thing that you're supposed to be doing and start listening to the people of Arundic quite, not the builders and the lawyers and the people who want the almighty buck. Thank you.
John Corino, eighty-five Kennedy Circle. Everybody said what I wanted to say, but I'll say it in a nutshell. Been there since nineteen eighty-six. And I'll say once, I'll say it again. The reason I stayed in that house was I know it was zoned R-one. I've traveled all around this country. I've had people come to my house who live in Boston and stuff. They say, John, this is a beautiful, beautiful neighborhood. I did a lot of work at this house. If I knew it was zoned for another thing, I would have been gone a long, long time ago. And I'll be honest with you, the neighbors, any one of these, any walk through the neighborhood there, I just wondered, has anybody ever walked through the neighborhood? Number one. Number two, there was an accident two weeks ago on a, when I was coming out there on a corner of Norton and Densmore. When the kids were going in, some lady rushed, they were just, I, I said, you gotta be kidding me. There's an accident right there, okay? Number two. If they, number three, if they ever did a traffic thing around there, when did they do the traffic thing? On a Sunday? Did you ever just go by there seven fifteen, two thirty in the afternoon? It's unberageous. It's, it's crazy there. My house backs right up through those woods. I love in this neighborhood, like I said, there's people in that neighborhood right now that I know for a fact that they've got four or five offers on their houses, but they're afraid to tell people what's gonna go back there because it'll go down in the valley of the house. I don't got too much more to say, but I'll tell you right now, this board's gotta stick with it, and if Arundic quite, just like that young kid said, I coach you soccer in this town, okay? There's no feels around this town. There's no feels around this town. You got this and that, this and that. It's bull BS. We've got, if you want to bring in more young people in this country, in this community, leave it on. Put our one or put a field bed, I have no problem. But you put apartments back, you're just going to ruin the decor of the whole neighborhood over there. Like I said, I've been in since 86, like the fourth meeting I've been to. And I've walked around, people, some of these people are saying, we're doing this again and again and again. Enough of the finance, enough of the money. I know all that stuff. I mean, to me, it's just gibberish. Everybody's trying to make a buck, okay? Yeah, I would like to make a 30% margin on stuff. I'm in sales, okay? What's this all about? It's just nonsense. And I've had enough of it, but I'll be honest with you, if this does go through, you could probably lose it around the resident, because I just think it's just a crock. It totally is. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Walter Jastresab, 171 Kennedy Circle. I have to take my towel out to say a weep over them, over what they intend to do here. I'm 95. I was in the service, and I work hard for my money. We have a problem with transportation. The roads, they're only two lane. Those are small roads. And there's a lot of traffic, over 20 buses every day, and we've got 200, approximately 200 students that go to that school. That's twice a day you have the traffic upset. Now, the state would have to do, or the county or so, would have to expand the roads. That's only the traffic problem. Now, you're going to have all those homes, this building being constructed, 62 units. That means there'll be 124 cars possibly. Not only that, there's 62 homes, and each family will use about 8 million gallons of water a month. That's the average. Now, do you think there's not going to be increases in construction, underground? And electricity being right through the property? Now, then there's the pond. They were going to run a pipe, drainage pipe, in that direction, towards the pond that was just expressed. And that's going to increase the amount of water. Now, the state said they were going to correct this. Now, they will have to. I think that the state has to be known about this problem. They will have to come into the picture, and we want to get an answer on just how they will handle it. Now, I know that they're putting up expensive rental units. Now, they don't have to put down expensive rental units. I figured out that they will be making $68,000 a month, because a $1,000 unit, this is what they're going for now, just what they plan on putting up. Now, I have to say a prayer. I have to say a prayer for them, that they're not going to get this money.
Sure.
I believe that it's not going to go through.
Okay.
Because of all these things that are coming up. Now, if that's, I don't want to expand it anymore. I had more, but there might be another, excuse me, another session on this, and I've got to save some of it for later. Thank you.
My name is Israel Santiago. I live at 292 Herbertley Road. And this is the first I'm actually seeing this. And even though I live on Herbertley Road, the amount of traffic that comes through in the morning with the schools is ridiculous. This is just going to add to it even more. I have a kid who's disabled, who is outside playing basketball, ball goes in the street. How much traffic is going to go through there? And he's not the only kid that's disabled. There's a couple of other kids in the neighborhood who are. And coming out here today, I just noticed, one of the reasons why I love my neighborhood is the support that we have in the community. That's why I want, I love where I am, because we value each other, we value the neighborhood where we live in. If you put this up, this changes everything about the neighborhood. And be honest, if this goes through, I may have to start thinking about moving myself, because I don't want to see this. I really don't. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Kathy Green. I live at 280 Kennedy Circle. I want to say that I completely agree with everything that Sherri Everchett has said. I'd like to add a few points. One being that when you decided to clarify, quote, "the loophole" that their attorney sought to exploit, you did that for a reason. You affirmed that it should stay R1 residential. Please continue to do that. We don't need rental units. I also would like to speak as, I am a landlord. I live in Arundic quite. I own rental properties in several other towns, as well as the city of Rochester. What I have found in my long landlord experience is, you get rental units in there, people don't care about rental units. They go downhill. It changes the value of the neighborhood. It changes the character of the neighborhood. If you have single-family homes, and I have gone as a landlord to only renting out single-family homes, because the clientele is much better. They care about it as if they're, it's their own home. They keep up the property. And that will happen if you allow the single-family residential in there. Another area that hasn't been addressed is the crime. We're seeing an increase now that spring is coming. We're seeing an increase of crime in the neighborhood. You know, our car alarms are going off all the time. I mean, luckily, all our neighbors know each other, and we protect each other. We've got enough dogs in the neighborhood that we can protect each other, but it's, we don't want to see an increase in crime that low-income rental units will apply. The other thing that you're talking about is to grant the hardship variance usage. The gentleman mentioned 24% return, which was available to him on 62 units instead of the 31 single-family homes. Who gets a 24% return right now? I'm sorry, that's outrageous, and that's just greedy, okay? He can make 31 single-family homes work. And if he doesn't want to make 31 single-family homes work, then, you know what? He can try and sell it back to the school, because I'm sure the school would be very interested in that property, and he would get his return on his money. So I urge you to deny his application for the 62 rental units. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ma'am?
Hi. I'll make this short, because everyone is tired. I live at 923 Whitlock Road. The increase in the traffic for this, this building would be even worse than what it is now. I echo what everyone said. The traffic coming down Whitlock, people cut through to get to Densmore. There's kids, the people are, you know, taking their kids to school at these certain hours of the day. And I really thought, I looked at that SEQR report, and the first point said, are there facilities within 1,500 feet of the project? Which is a school? So I understand, you know, are you going to be putting it further back from the school? Is that what you're all doing? I don't know. I have a lot of questions that haven't been, you know, answered, and that my biggest issue is the increase in the traffic and the safety of the students. And as I say, I'm just astounded that this even got this far. It's been going on a year, and it's ridiculous. Not to mention noise and, you know, other things. So that's all. Wrap it up. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yep.
So...
Hold the public.
We're going to hold the public hearing open, because you're going to add, I take it to the next, the next meeting or the meeting after.
Hopefully, maybe the meeting after, I think, to realist that, let it get done.
So if you don't want to make more comments, that's perfectly fine. You can wait if you want to make comment.
Just real quick.
Okay.
I know, it's almost halftime in the game. I just want to clarify on the rate of return, and Mr. Bruckner's letter of March 7 clarifies that. The 20 to 25% was the, just on the hard costs, the actual rate of return after all the soft costs, you know, taxes, insurance, overhead, and all that kind of stuff, brokers' commission, legal fees, and all that, was in the range of 10 to 12.5%. So I think probably he shouldn't have used that first number, because it was a little bit misleading, because it did not include all the costs, which I think is more of a reasonable rate of return, especially with the risk and time involved. Just a couple of points that, the board, the planning board made an egg deck on some of these issues like traffic, and we did a comprehensive traffic study to show there really isn't any consequential traffic issue from this development. And we did...
Folks, folks, please, please, let them finish.
And it was a very good traffic study, and it shows that really, it is really a minuscule contribution compared to what's already there. The, there was never any statement that this would be limited to seniors. I think we probably said, we expect to be a lot of seniors, and he couldn't, he could limit to seniors, but that's not the plan on the table right now. I think her point was, it's not going to contribute a lot of students to the school district, so it's really a moneymaker for the, as far as taxes go, for the school, and especially in the town. So we will, you know, supplement, try to address some of the issues, both that the board raised and the public raised, and we'd ask that be tabled for two months.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep.
Excuse me. We're talking about traffic?
Ma'am, ma'am.
Are you for sure?
Ma'am, we're going to hold this open till the next meeting, so you can hold your comments, and if you want, they'll be back in a couple of months, and then we can, the meeting, the, open to the public meeting is staying open, but we're going to wrap it up tonight.
Okay. They had a study, he said, and I just want to make one point, please.
Okay, quickly.
They made surveillance of the traffic, and they said it wasn't a hardship.
Okay, ma'am.
I'd like to know what time they did it. 1 o'clock in the morning, when everybody was sleeping?
So I'm going to...
Do you want to recess?
Recess right now, and then I guess I'll table it afterwards, okay?
Yeah, but it's our, yep. It's open for the next meeting.
Okay. You want to read them in, or?
If you want to read them in, there's just three letters that came with all this.
Okay.
We don't have to read them. We can take notice of them, and they're part of the record.
We're going to take a 10-minute recess and then come back. Thank you. We're gonna take a 10-minute recess and then come back, um, thank you.
Mike, can I bring up a question? We're just doing the height, we don't have to do that's going to the front line either?
Uh, no. We, we need to do the height because they wanna take it to the front line, or?
Yeah, because where they're proposing the fence is actually what would be considered the side yard of the property, between the rear foundation line and the front foundation line. And so in that area of the property is called our side yard, where you're limited to a four-foot height. And they're proposing a six, which is why they need the two-foot.
And this is a type-two action also, so, anybody wanna make a motion? Go ahead.
I'm making a motion that we approve this request for a variance to bring the fence up to the corner of, the front corner of the house with a two-foot variance in height.
I second.
It certainly, um, will not change the character of the neighborhood because first of all, you can hardly see it. It's, uh, it's kinda hidden in the trees, and secondly, uh, uh, they could do what, they could actually live there without this, but with their, uh, family and their dogs and so forth, uh, there is no other alternative than to bring this up. It's not a very substantial request, it's only a couple of feet for the height. There'll be no adverse effect on the physical or environmental conditions of the neighborhood, and, uh, it's self-created, but certainly would not be to the point where we should deny it.
Now, um, this is where I have debate or after?
Um, you can, uh, I think Andre seconded the motion, you can open it up for discussion.
I was just, um, so...
He may be seconding...
I wish I had that.
Okay.
I, I, I...
It was out of order.
No, that's okay. I, I don't agree with the fact that we bring it up to the front, um, because I don't like the idea that it makes a complete wall at the front of the house. That's 22 feet forward, they wanna bring it from the back corner of the house, which is 22 feet, um, 22.2 feet. Um, I believe, you know, if it's not a necessity, that we shouldn't bring it, uh, further than the back corner. However, I would give them five or 10 feet to make a compromise, um, but not all the way out to the front, so that when you drive by the front of the house, you don't see a wall of fence, um, which is basically what you're gonna have matching the front wall of the house. And I believe in setting it back, it makes the overall character of the neighborhood better, and aesthetically better. Um, they do have quite a bit of backyard space, so I don't believe that the extra amount of space will, um, really hurt them, um, you know, in any way. But, um, that being said, um, would there be a compromise, Mr. Thomas, on, uh, cutting it back to say, uh, um, 10 feet forward from the back corner of the fence and, and keep the fence 12 feet back?
I'm okay with that, I think that's reasonable.
Okay, so, uh, any other, okay, uh, so I'm gonna make it, um...
Condition?
Condition?
So, Mr. Chairman, just to clarify, you're saying 12 feet back from the front corner of the foundation of the house?
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
12 feet back.
I don't know if there's a window along that side of the house. If the window happened to be right at the, where the fence post would be, they would have to go to one side of the window or the other.
I'm okay with that.
And I think whichever way they like.
Right.
So they can adjust it forward or backward.
The space of the window. Okay. Condition, 12 feet back from the front corner of the, of the front of the house, front corner of the house. Uh, and it was seconded by?
I second.
Yep. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, next one is, uh, Thandora Lane, the garage, the extension of the garage, addition of the garage. Thandora Lane.
So we're gonna do grant and grant, we'll check those.
Okay.
Right.
Okay. Anybody wanna make a motion on Thandora Lane?
I'll make a motion that we accept this, excuse me, it's got this application.
This is a type-two action also?
I don't think it's gonna have too much of a change to the character of the neighborhood, the way he's gonna stagger it, his house is sorta staggered. Alternatives, when you're handicapped, there's not very many alternatives you have to what you can do and how you can move around. It's not a substantial request, I mean, he's got a steep slope there and everything else, but it's been designed, you know, by an architect and everything, I think he's gonna do what he's gotta do. I don't think it'll have any physical effect or vital medical conditions in the neighborhood. And if it's self-created, unfortunately, you know, the, the person does have a disability, but I think he's, uh, he's entitled to it.
Do we have to, uh, explain that there are two variances on this, or just?
No.
Okay, application as, as, as requested?
Right.
Okay?
I'll second it.
You'll second it? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Lost my own name out there. Motion carries. And next one then.
Yep.
Okay. Um, next one is Lakefront, there's two, there's, um, ZB 17043 and 17044, um...
Mr. Chairman, I, I recommend that we table this. Uh, seems like there's a lot going on with this property, uh, with both of these properties, so I would recommend, um, that we table and have the gentleman come back after the negotiations for the sale is done, and, and with more detail of, of what's gonna go there.
Anybody second that? I'll second it. Um, it was a type-two action, but, uh...
You don't have to deal with it now.
I don't have to deal with it now, so...
Is that for 423, then we gotta do 4...
We're gonna do them both, we're talking both together?
Both together.
423 and 419. Um, all those in favor say?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
We didn't grant, so...
So we do table.
Okay, well, there's a spot for that, huh? Motion carries, right, to table.
Yep. And let's clarify this one, I said, actually, there's a special for granted conditions, so let's check that one instead for that one, just to be more precise. I'm gonna cross this off here. Yeah, just to be more...
Gotcha. Okay. And then the last one is, um, Densmore. And this is, was a, a use variance, um, and I, uh, I think I'll, uh, just jump in here, and I'll make a motion that we are gonna table this one also.
And continue the public hearing open.
Yep, the public hearing stays open. Um, do I hear a second?
Second. You keeping it open in past June, I mean, until Lee wants to come back, or?
Um, we're gonna, he mentioned that he'd be back for the June meeting, so...
Yes, we're April already, yes.
Alright, should I, uh, put that on there, or just table till June? Or do you need to do that?
Just table.
Table, just table. All those in favor say?
That's fine.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
I, my thought, I just wanna make sure that, um, so for the purposes of advertising for next month, for May, um, they would have the opportunity, the applicant for, uh, Densmore, if they were ready to come back, they could.
Right.
But if we maybe would be able to communicate with the applicant in advance of, um, the May meeting to determine whether or not they anticipated being there, and we could advertise, um, accordingly, so that if it's being postponed, that, that residents and interested community members would know whether or not that item would be heard at that, at the May meeting or the June meeting.
Right.
I just wanted, for clarity's sake and for making sure people know when the item will be taken up again, I think it's gonna be important to communicate.
And so technically, with leaving the public hearing open, you wouldn't need to re-advertise so long as it continued on the agenda?
Correct.
But I, I think the more information you can give people, so they don't show up expecting it to be discussed, the better. So if you know in May that they're not going to be prepared to speak, you can say that the, the, the application, the public hearing remains open, um, but we're not going to be hearing any public comment until the following meeting in June.
Okay. Thank you.
Now, last on our, um, evening agenda, is we have some, uh, we have minutes from January 9th, 2000, let's see, is it, alright. There we go, alright, cool. Alright, um, we have meetings, anybody wanna make a motion on meetings? Um, anybody need to make any changes on January 9th? Hearing none? Right?
And you can do them all together.
I can do them all together?
Yep.
Alright, uh, February, uh, 6th?
Movie accept.
Uh, March, March 6th?
Movie accept.
All in favor? Second, okay. Do I have a, a sheet for these, or I don't have to?
I got it.
Okay, alright, um, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you for your help, everyone, I appreciate it. Meeting, do I have a motion for adjournment?
I move that we would be adjourned.
Okay, I'll second that. Thank you.
Hey. Do you like?